Good evening, everybody. Good evening. We would like to reconvene the special meeting from earlier this evening, and Christie has an update. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the special meeting convened at 5:31, at which time we took comment and recessed to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, which is the code section that allows the council to discuss employee personnel performance evaluation. The council discussed the item that was listed on the posted agenda, which was the city manager's performance evaluation, and did not complete the evaluation and instead directed that the matter be continued to April 8th, at which time we'll set another meeting to continue the discussion. And that concludes my closed session report.
Thank you, Christie. Thank you for that update. From the ridgeline to the coastline, from Trancas to Topanga, thank you all for attending this evening. Welcome to the City of Malibu City Council Meeting, March 25th, 6:40 PM. And can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Proton Ferro.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Present, here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Jim Palmer wants to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And we're going to look for approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, there might be a couple items pulled.
Well, we're not pulling yet, but I would suggest we put the presentation by L.A. County Public Works and Fire Department to number A in ceremonial presentations.
How does the council feel about that?
I'll second that.
And I'd like to add one more thing, if that's all right?
Please.
I'd like to add that we, as a council, I believe, forgot to close a meeting in honor of Millie Decker, who passed away just before Christmas Eve, and I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Millie Decker.
I don't remember if we did or not, Skylar. I don't have a problem with that. I think we may have completed that one time. Karen, do you have a comment on that? Do you remember?
We did, but we can do it again.
I thought we did, too.
Okay.
Let's do it again.
Yeah, I was just up there earlier this morning with Bonnie Decker, and she indicated that she did not receive anything in the mail from the city, so that's why I brought it up.
Okay.
We tried to send something to her, and I even went by and verified the address that the house was still standing. So we've made a couple attempts, but we'll get it, and I'll personally deliver it to her.
Thank you, Rick. And so we will move on, and we have a couple of ceremonial presentations, and we get the report first.
Mayor Wagner, would you first like a report on the posting of the agenda?
Thank you.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 14th, 2019, and did you want to take a vote on your approval of the agenda?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, a presentation from Los Angeles County Public Works Director Mark Pastrulla, who's been very active and patient lately. Mark and Chief Daryl Osby is here as well. Hi, Chief. Good evening, and thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Manager, and audience. My name is Daryl Osby, and I'm the Fire Chief of the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And as you know, we've had several meetings in relation to the Woolsey incident, and I've had several meetings with our Honorable Supervisor Q and her staff, your City Manager, and we've had several town hall meetings. And part of the objectives of those meetings was to try to come up with a strategic and safe approach as it relates to the rebuild of the homes that were lost, unfortunately, during the Woolsey incident. I've been working very closely with my counterpart from the Department of Public Works, Mark Pastrulla, who oversees the Water District 29, and so I just want to give a quick report in relation to the fire code update, and I'll turn it over to my counterpart from DPW for his update, and then we'll be available for questions. So as you know, prior to the Woolsey incident, the existing fire code articulated that the expected water flow for this area was 1,250 GPM, 1,250 gallons per minute, a 20 PSI for two hours. After consultation with my staff and with the Department of Public Works, we're going to modify the current fire code, and we're going to reduce the timeframe from one hour to two hours. So with that being stated, that's going to cover most of the city of Malibu, and that's going to take effect April 1st, 2019. And then as I move forward with the fire code, and then I know my counterpart from DPW moves forward with the building code, we'll be working with the County of Los Angeles to update the code at the next update, which is the end of the year for my counterpart and next year for me. So this will take effect, like I said, April 1st. The only outstanding area as it pertains to Malibu is Encinal Canyon. There are still some challenges in that area. I'm pretty confident that those will be resolved to allow those homeowners to rebuild. And with that being stated, I'll turn this presentation over to my counterpart, Mark Pastrulla from DPW.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Osby, and thank you for having us here, Mayor Wagner and council folks, and want to acknowledge the Supervisor's Office representative here as well and introduce our regional engineer, David Reibman, who's here from the Water Works District 29, our local representative. It's a pleasure to be in front of you. I haven't been into Malibu in a while. I've been pretty busy, though, working with all of you and working with the residents of the communities to restore and create a more resilient Malibu. And those pieces that the L.A. County Public Works is very much involved with are our flood control system here in the Malibu, moving a lot of sediment out to Zuma and off to the landfill and keeping people safe from mud flow and debris. We're doing a lot of house visits, and we're restoring a lot of roadway work, at least that leads into the Malibu. One of the primary services that Public Works provides to the Malibu, and we're proud to do that, is to provide water to the residents of Malibu through our District 29. A system that many of you know has been challenged through the years and was formed in a way that you don't normally form water districts, but it is a system that has operated, and I'm proud to say operated, in an outstanding manner during the Woolsey fire, but there is an opportunity here for us to, as we rebuild, provide more resilience in that system. And one thing I want to remind everyone in the crowd here and the council today is a little bit about water systems. There's some misnomers sometimes about them, and I'd like just to remind everybody about the purpose of a water system. A water system is designed for domestic water service for drinking, cooking, bathing, sanitation, and irrigation. The second objective is fire protection. To accomplish these purposes, public water systems are designed with storage and pipeline carrying capacities to provide water to simultaneously meet the highest domestic demand in the fire flow requirement as outlined in Los Angeles County Fire Code, and Chief Osby just touched on that. The water distribution systems that we're talking about, I'll remind everyone, are not and cannot be practically designed to fight wildfire. So what happens in the system that we're designing is we look in the neighborhoods that we're designing for, and we look at essentially the largest structure in that neighborhood, and we design the water system to meet a certain water pressure for a certain duration so that we can then fight a structure fire, mostly started from within the structure itself. And so it is important to know that a water system in itself is not, again, designed to fight wildfire or to suppress wildfire. It's designed to provide that domestic water supply and to fight a single structure fire in a neighborhood for a certain duration of time. And I mention that because we're setting now resiliency for the homes that are being rebuilt, and we're looking at what is the existing system providing. And I've been working, as Chief Osby said, with my counterparts from Fire Department, and our regional engineer's been looking, and one of the services that we provided as a result of the fire is we went back and took a look at all of the structures that had been burned in the Malibu, destroyed, and looked at the existing fire flow for those structures, provided those fire flows without reacting, not reacting to requests, but actually proactively developing a picture, if you will, for all of the homes that have been destroyed to see if we might have a better picture, and provided that information to our counterparts at Fire Department. And this has resulted in us more quickly understanding where the weaknesses in the system are and what we want to make more resilient, as I said. So you know, the system was built, formed in '59 to serve residents of Malibu in the unincorporated area of Topanga. The district was formed by 15 separate water systems with old and substandard facilities served by groundwater wells. Pretty, not that unusual for the county to actually take over such a system, and just recently, you might have read in the paper, we took over a system in southeast Los Angeles recently that not only isn't metered, but is on a, looks very much like 1959 Malibu. You know, wells, three wells, two of them gone, people running out of water, the system's sort of breaking down. In '59, the county came in and took that system over, and '63, the district completed construction of a 35-mile transmission water line originating in Culver City, that's where our water comes from here in the Malibu, and extending along the Pacific Coast Highway from Santa Monica-Ventura County line to bring the district a reliable water supply. A reminder to everyone that the water in Malibu is 100% imported. It comes from Metropolitan Water District, and through the years, the district has been making that mainline system that goes up the PCH more and more resilient, things like having two lines, above-grade lines, dealing with landsliding, earthquake, and that. We're very, very confident in the system that delivers the pressure water up the mainland, up PCH nowadays. And over time, we've been making the system more robust in each of the canyon areas. In 2011, the interconnection of the transmission line with MWD's water system was changed to further improve the reliability of the water supply in the district, and the district has one main source, however, the district has one main supply of water, which is imported water, as I said, and this creates an interesting situation that we're pumping water up here, two tanks in these separate canyons, and then those tanks hold a certain amount of water for a certain amount of time. What I've been told is primarily if we cut ourselves off from PCH, we'd have around two days of water or more, about two to three days of water if we had no replenishment of the water. As you know, the fire went for much more than two days, and we kept pumping up, MWD line kept solid, and we kept pumping to the tanks that were in play for the Fire Department to keep us suppressing structure fires as they went. We have approximately 7,500 meters or service connections with about one-third of these meters serving Topanga customers, and the remaining are serving Malibu customers. In November 2018, the Woolsey fire destroyed or substantially damaged approximately 600 homes served by this district, and the district's water system also sustained some damages that are currently being repaired. But again, the system stayed whole throughout. We had power throughout the system. We were on backup generators throughout the fire, and in some of the portions of it, we did have telemetry drop, but we just force-fed the west end of the system throughout the fire, sort of blind, if you will. I know I had some heroic activities by some of our staff who actually made their way to west end and stayed with the tanks to monitor what was happening up there, and to their credit and to the credit of the system that we maintained, there was no loss of water to the tanks in our entire system, and we never went without power in the system despite what we know to be a challenge by Edison and others in terms of the PSP program. So currently, there are nine water systems within district impacted by the Woolsey fire. These include Latigo Canyon, Winding Way, Point Doom, Posthead, Horizon, Lower Bush, Philip, Trancas, and Encinal Canyon. And we've conducted analysis of the water systems in the area and found that, with the exception of the Encinal Canyon system, all systems that I mentioned there can meet the fire flow requirements of 1,250 gallons per minute for one hour. This is good news. This means that those that are at least outside the Encinal area are going to meet the fire flow requirements to rebuild their homes. In the Encinal Canyon area, the district staff tested the hydrants near destroyed or damaged homes and determined that the system can provide fire flow of 500 GPM to 10 of the 17 impacted homes and less than 500 gallons per minute for the remaining seven homes. There are seven homes below state fire standards, in other words. The district has an existing multi-phase water system master plan. As you know, we brought it here and I actually presented it in the past. Phase one of the master plan will address the pipeline fire flow deficiencies and approximately 50% of the tank storage deficiencies at a cost of $120 million. Phase one is 27 projects prioritized based on specific criteria related to their importance to the district's operational reliability and water quality. I made a presentation on this master plan, I think it was two years ago. We continue to pursue that master plan. What you're about to hear me talk about is that we're going to jumble this a little bit and reprioritize some of the master plan projects so that we can serve those that were first impacted by the Woolsey fire. Phase 1A, a subset of Phase 1, consists of 12 priority projects in Phase 1 and at a cost of $60 million. The funding to complete Phase 1A, from the capital surcharge the district collects from customers, approximately about $5 million a year, and from low-interest loans from the state revolving funds. The environmental impact for Phase 1A is scheduled to be circulated for public comics this summer, and it's something that I'll be asking the city to help me with, to move that environmental document along, not only the CEQA document, but the Coastal Commission approvals that will be required to move this on. Phase 1A is important because within the Woolsey fire area, including the Lower Bush Tank, Encinal Canyon interconnection with Los Virgin, Los Virgin's municipal water district, Pacific Coast Highway, Water Main Creek crossings, and Pacific Coast Highway water main improvements from Zumera's Drive to Escondido Beach Road are all within it. The Encinal Canyon Water System Improvement Project consists of three separate projects is on the Phase 1 Priority Project list. So what I'm saying there is we're moving Encinal Canyon up to highest priority. Okay, the three... These three projects are Upper Encinal Canyon Pipeline Project, priority number 20, Upper Encinal Canyon Tank, which was priority number 21, and the Lower Encinal Pipeline Project, which was 22, and they'll all be moved up to top priority. We're now consolidating these projects into one project and moving them up, as I said, for those that have been impacted because of the Woolsey fire impact. We anticipate Encinal Canyon Permit Water System, the entire three pieces of it to be completed within four years on the outside. The reason it's four years, for those that are gasping in the audience, is we have to get environmental documents completed, we need a Coastal Commission approval, we will need the city supporting, moving those along. I continue to work with my counterparts at Fire. Chief Osby and I have drafted an MOU that you'll be privileged to, you may have it tonight in your handouts, that takes care of this first phase of the 1250. It basically reinstates the standards that Chief Osby mentioned tonight, but it also mentions in it that we are going to enter into a second MOU with each other to address the Encinal Canyon residents in the interim between this zero and four years while we're working, attempting or actually moving them, getting them to yes to their building permits. The County of Los Angeles recognizes how important it is for residents to be able to restore their lives. It's been a pleasure to come here and talk to you. I know a lot of people have a lot of questions or may have a lot of questions. I want just to, though, before I give that up, is to reinstate my commitment to the city, reinstate Water Works 29, Los Angeles County Flood Control District, and L.A. County Public Works, all committed to restoring Malibu to a more resilient Malibu as we move forward post-Woolsey fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that very much. Daryl, you're up again.
One item I forgot, I have our Fire Marshal here, Nick DiValli. I really want to thank him also because he's been working with the Department of Public Works, looking at our fire code and trying to modify it in a way that we still meet the intent of the code, but we still have a safe community. So I just wanted to thank him for his efforts, and then I know that we were asked to have a one-stop shop here in Malibu, so he's been coordinating those efforts also. So I just want to just acknowledge him for those efforts.
Well, thank you very much, and those Tuesday and Thursday things seem to be very popular. And anything else, anything from the council?
I had a question for Mark, which was, is there any way, and I even, maybe Christie could chime on this, that we could get an emergency permit to go ahead and address the water system in Encinal? Because it seems to me that if there was a way to do that, we could get it done quicker, and it would help our residents get in their homes and get their homes rebuilt quicker. Could we appeal to the Coastal Commission and do something like that, Christie, for that area?
So, Councilmember Peak, I appreciate the question, and I think Christie and I can work together to go and seek such a, some relief from Coastal with respect to permitting on this. And that is typically the question, is can we classify the work as emergency work, response to emergency? It'll probably take some negotiating with Coastal. Of course, we're treating it that way as an agency, a public agency, but I appreciate what we can do, maybe go together to talk to Coastal about how we process that permit.
I would just ask along those lines that you look at this because the amount of people that are not able to go into their homes right now and move forward with their process that's held up over a lot of, not just the water stuff, but would be very helpful to them in moving that process forward. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Also, I know Chief Osby and I talked a week and a half ago or something like that. What is the option in the Encinal area of tanks in the interim as we're building the system to allow these people to get their homes going?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember. Like Mark articulated when we were talking, I know that his timeframe is up to four years to make that system optimal, but what we're going to do in the interim is we're going to collaborate, and from my perspective, is that most likely those homes won't meet the current code prior to four years, but I believe that we can come up with something reasonable in the interim to allow permitting and rebuilding to occur prior to the four years. So my staff, and me as the Fire Chief, our Fire Marshal here, will develop something that's reasonable, and the Fire Department's going to be reasonable, taking into consideration that there's a strategic approach that's being done by the Department of Public Works, and so we'll take those things into consideration, allowing people to rebuild. So we don't have an answer today, but we will have an answer for the council soon for your approval and the third district for their review and approval.
But, thank you. We appreciate it being a high priority because it's just impacting lives in a large way, as you know, so, and if it impacts their lives, it impacts our lives, and then it impacts your lives. So we really would appreciate you trying to figure this out sooner than later because I think the hard part of recovering from a fire is the unknown and waiting around for answers, and this has been a really difficult one for the community.
Understood, and just, I just want to acknowledge your City Manager. There's not many days that go by that we don't get a text or a phone call or banging on the desk, "Where are you in this?" And so we understand the importance of this, and working collaboratively, we'll get it done.
And I've been sitting there, and she's been bothering you sometimes, so yes, I get it. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you very much, gentlemen. You're the key players in this whole process. You know, we can only do so much here at the city, and everybody wants to know what the Fire Department and the Water Company can do, and I really appreciate you being flexible in your requirements and working as hard as you have to facilitate everybody getting their lives back together, so I really appreciate it. And Chief DiValli, thank you very much for everything you've done. I know you're in an awkward position, but really appreciate you coming out, talking to everybody, and doing everything that you can, so thank you very much.
I'd like to also thank both of you and Nick DiValli, who's been here and really been on the ground, and for everybody who's met with him, and if you haven't yet, you might not need to after tonight, but he's really been here and been a stable presence, and that's something that we've needed. So thank you for allocating that resource to us.
And Chief and Mark, we did move the calendar around to have you guys up first, but part of the protocol here, we did step out of bounds. We needed to hear from four public speakers, so if you could hang out for 10 to 12 minutes. No, this is on this item. So we have four speakers on this item. Chief and Mark will hang out. Let's be brief, if you can. David, you're up first. I can't read your last name, David. Anoyan, okay. Vanoyen, okay. You're up, sir. And you're followed by Don Schmitz, followed by Harriet Pollan, followed by Gail Gibson-Howard. Those are our four speakers. Thanks for hanging out, gentlemen.
For others of us under number two.
This is 1E. I'm reading off.
We're not... I didn't comment on 1E.
1E is this presentation from the chief and Mark. Go ahead, sir.
My name is David Vanoyen. I'm an architect. I live in Ensnal Canyon, Avenida de la Ensnal, and it sounds like very good news, but four years sounds long and far away for our clients, and for my son, and others who experienced a burnout. So we would appreciate anything that the city can do, and their ability to make under emergency powers, the ability to move this along. I don't think insurance companies cover four years housing, and I think that anything that the city can do to make it happen, obviously, we're concerned most and foremost for the burnouts, but we've been an area that's been neglected for a long time in the water district. We were number one priority three years ago. We slipped in ascension to the second phase, second 10 years, but we're pleased to be back. And I think even though our pipes don't leak so much, they are small, and they don't provide the gallons that Chief Osby thinks is important. So I would appreciate whatever the city can do to move this along would be very helpful to a number of residents in the La Chusa Highlands.
Thank you, sir. And Don, you're up next. Thank you. Don is followed by Harriet.
Councilmembers, Don Schmitz. I'd like to start off by thanking Mark Pastral. I've already thanked Rob Duboe. What the Public Works Departments did for the city of Malibu, both the city Public Works and the county, was phenomenal in regards to the debris basin, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank you guys. You saved this town in ways that people can't really understand. So on to water. As it pertains to Ensnal, the good news is...
Sorry, could somebody start the clock on Don?
Oh, please, no, just leave it at three minutes. That's perfect. So the good news is, is you don't have to process an emergency coastal development permit, and the reason you don't have to is you have a pending coastal development permit in the Planning Department. It was submitted in 2014. It was fully vetted by the senior engineers at Water District 29. It has complete grading plans that were redone two or three times to accommodate the 300,000-gallon tank that the Water District has always planned for Avenida de la Precia, if I've said it correctly. It was done under the tutelage and direction of, at that time, City Manager Jim Thorson, who, as you know, was a Public Works Director before he was a City Manager for Malibu. It has 12-inch water mains. It has complete geology and soils reports that have been reviewed by the city geologist. It has complete biota review by the city biologist. It's ready to go, and it's been sitting there for a while, and in no small part, that is because it was lowered in regards to the priority. But even if the Planning Department was to bring this in front of the Planning Commission or the City Council on an urgent basis within the next year or so, the Water District engineers are still going to have to do the working drawings for them. The estimates that they've given me in the past were at least eight months to do something like that, and then they got to go out there and build it. It would still be a protracted period of time, years. That's why I have urged this council repeatedly to adopt the alternative water storage standards. Now, that is right in the fire code. However, typically, the Fire Department does that when you're above the pressure zone or you're more than 2,000 feet away from a water main. But as an interim step, it makes complete sense to have the onsite water storage tanks so that people can build their homes within this neighborhood off of Ensnal Canyon. The standard, in my experience, that the Fire Department has been implementing for the alternative water storage has been about 20,000 gallons, and I have provided documentation to you that if all the property owners on Avenida de Buenaventura and del Precia, and I probably messed that up, were to put a 20,000-gallon water tank in addition to the 300,000-gallon water tank that Water District 29 ultimately would be constructing up there, we would have another 900,000 gallons of water storage. And should there ever be a failure of the municipal system, that would still be available to defend each house. And I've also provided this council the legislative authority where you can adopt those alternative standards and direct the plan checkers to implement those. So we really ought to get that coastal development permit in front of the Planning Commission, the City Council, for the water tank off of Ensnal Canyon. It has been vetted in detail by the engineers at Water District 29. We ought to move this forward, and you should please adopt the alternative standards for onsite water storage. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Harriet, Harriet is, you're followed by Gail Gibson-Howard. Thank you, Harriet.
I'm Harriet Pollan, board member of La Chusa Highlands Homeowners Association. I live at the, near the intersection of Lower Ensnal and PCH, the very area that you're talking about. I represent 57 homes and a lot of vacant lots. Some of you need to know what's been happening in our area over the past couple of years. I've been very happy tonight to hear the representative from the Water District speak about this in a positive way, because we just about gave up all hope. You may not know this, but for the past 10 years, District 29 has prevented building in La Chusa because we have 4-inch steel and asbestos concrete water mains. People have not been allowed to build on their property because the lines were too small for the Fire Department regulations. They have even been told by the department to pay for their own improvements. Now, we're not talking a few dollars, I mean, we're talking a couple of thousands of dollars. Since September of 2013, District 29 has been communicating with our organization about replacement and even giving us dates for completion. They promised to replace our 4-inch mains with 12-inch steel pipe and with 8-inch steel pipe, and work was scheduled for 2018, 2019. They also promised to replace our old, worn-out 70,000-gallon water tank with a new 300,000-gallon tank, bolted, and scheduled for construction between 2019 and 2020. No work was started, and in 2017, we were removed from all the improvement lists. In the Woolsey Fire, we lost 12 homes. Now, due to the fact that we have pipes that are way too small, and everybody acknowledges it, these people are now in limbo because of the pipes. This is double jeopardy, and it's really not fair. Is this not a taking in legal terms? You have made our property almost worthless if this is not solved. Suggestions from the Water District about putting large water tanks on each property, which has been suggested to our people, will not work in a community that's on a slope, where lots are not flat and slope downwards. It just won't work. Perhaps District 29 is interested in buying all of these lots that you have essentially condemned. I'm hoping that tonight's meeting is recorded, so that everything that was said by the Water District is in the files. This is a collection of the plans from the Water District to us and everybody else. So thank you for your time. I hope the Water District lives up to its name, but God save us if it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Harriet, and that's why they stayed behind, to hear it. Gail Gibson-Howard.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Gail Gibson-Howard, and I stand as a officer of the Homeowners Association of the La Chusa Highlands area. Our home is located at 4241 Avenida de la Ensnal, and for 10 years, we've been denied the right to complete our home. My husband is now 81 years old. How long will it take for you to approve onsite water storage so that we can complete our home? We've got $3.6 million in the ground that we can't sell, we can't use, we can't do anything on. So I want some answers. I'm really tired of the meetings. I'm tired of people stating what they're going to do. It's time to see some action. And Chief Daryl Osby, I've called your office so many times, I cannot even name how many times I've called your office and not received a response as of yet. I am tired. I am really, really tired of sitting on all of this money and not able to do anything with it. We want to complete our home, and we want to be included in the Woolsey Fire victims. We want to be included. Don't leave us behind this time. And finally, I also want to just express how disappointing I am, pointed I am, that everyone is trying to reduce the Woolsey Fire to an incident. This isn't an incident, this is a disaster. People's lives have been destroyed, and we need them replaced as quickly as possible. We need them to be able to rebuild their homes as quickly as possible. Forgive my tone of voice tonight, I'm hoarse, because I'm a preacher's daughter, and I preach. That's what I do. But we need something done about this, and we need something done about this soon. We've been working with Mayor Protem, Karen Ferrer, and Mikey Pearson, we thank you for all that you're doing. Riva, I appreciate you setting up the meetings with David Reidman in Water District 29, but something needs to be put in writing and approved for us so that we can get this done. Onsite water storage helps everybody. It helps everybody. And I'm sorry, we were not priority during the Woolsey Fire. We were not. Our street was saved by three retired firewomen with a garden hose and water from a jacuzzi. That was extra water storage onsite. Mark Pastralis, I've contacted your office. Supervisor Kuhl, I've contacted your office. Who's going to do something about it and put something into action now so that we can build our home? Thank you.
And thank you, Gail, and thank you, gentlemen, for staying behind and absorbing what we're faced with in the next few years. Yeah, every day, well, every day, but for the next few years, that's our plate, and thank you for attending. And, Gail, I hope you see the earnestness in these gentlemen coming here tonight and speaking in detail to your question. Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, have a good evening. Thanks for coming. Okay, we're on to ceremonial presentations. So first up, we're going to have a moment with our poet laureate, Ricardo Means Ibarra, and we have an award for you, and I have a couple of brief comments, and I'll make them down at the podium.
We meet again.
This is really nicely done.
Look at that. Wow, that's impressive.
We were together over the weekend, along with Karen, and the leaving poet laureate and the upcoming poet laureate are both here this evening. So here's his commendation, and I'll sign it after I read it. Ricardo Means Ibarra dedicated a significant amount of time and energy as the first poet laureate of Malibu. And whereas his poetry programs and events provided an opportunity to promote awareness of arts and culture in our community, and whereas his poetry workshops provided opportunities for young students to learn the art of poetry, and whereas his poetry programs and events brought together residents, community leaders, business owners, to embrace the poetry in the city of Malibu. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Malibu City Council recommends Ricardo Means Ibarra for his dedication and commitment to the library, the literary arts during his term as poet laureate of the city of Malibu, 2017 to 2019. And thank you for your efforts on behalf of the city and the community that's here this evening.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
This is really cool, this one.
Look at that. All right.
And it's in a scroll.
You can sign this, too, right?
Yep. Okay.
All right. Yeah, yeah, please do. Well done, Ricardo. Hey, thank you, Skylar. You're awesome. Thank you so much for all of your kind poetry. Okay. You know, I just want to thank the support of the community, the creativity and the energy. I had incredible people to work with, students and teachers, community, the poetry committee, the arts committee, and just, people were like champions of the arts here. So it was, as I said on Saturday, an honor and a blast.
Thank you, Ricardo. Thank you very much.
Now we get to introduce. You're going to do that? Okay. All right. Where do you stand? Should I show? Politician in training. I think Ricardo's getting ready to go surfing. Ellen, the new poet laureate of Malibu. And Ann Buxey, please come up.
So I'll read this in, and then we'll go move from there. Whereas Ellen Reich is a Malibu resident, whereas Ms. Reich is honored by the city of Malibu as our next poet laureate for her dedication to the achievement of poetry and the advancement of poetry. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Malibu Council proudly recognizes Eileen for her... Ellen, I'm sorry. We just met, Ellen. For her continued contributions to the literary arts as the city of Malibu's new poet laureate from 2019 to 2021. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Certainly.
Thank you. To go?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I will say hallelujah, Malibu got poetry. And if you were here on Saturday, the room was packed for poetry. Poetry is changing the cultural footprint of Malibu, and it's thanks to the Cultural Arts Commission, the City Council for approving the suggestions, the poet laureate committee, and in no small way to the passion of this guy, and the incoming passion of this woman. Now, I used to think the prime of life was in the '30s, or forget about it. This is the prime of life, right here. You're looking at it. And Ellen, I want to congratulate you with another staff. There you go.
Oh, thank you so much. May I say a few words?
Please do.
Kristen had asked me to read a poem, which I would like to do. It's not too long, just one page, but first, I want to thank the City Council and all the people who have made poetry, you know, come alive in Malibu. And we had just a stellar, shining example of a first poet laureate, and I have a big job, but he, you know, will be a source of inspiration for me to continue in his huge We have had so many disasters in our city these last months, and my hope is that poetry can play a very important part in the healing process. I grew up in Newark, New Jersey, and came to Malibu in 1971, 1974, excuse me. So my poem deals with getting accustomed to living in California. It's called "West of Newark." Starting over in Malibu, we're dazzled by jacaranda and maroon bougainvillea, plucked strawberries crawling along walks, stunned by yellow mustard-covered mountains. mountains. We spy Emilio Estevez on the bike path, Newton John at the farmer's mart. Vegans press thumbs into mangoes to test ripeness. We eat our first tacos. Palisades crumble as we challenge them, driving while they tumble during insane winter rains we haven't learned to handle. Santa Ana wind explosions more powerful than God ravage our senses. Electric lines arc, spark into wildfire. Frightful times we trade for branches wrapped in rime ice. We prepare during firestorms with a measure of immunity. Pack peanuts, sweatpants, bottled water. Leave family albums upright like lead sentinels on our bookshelves. Lost keepsakes can't change the world, won't be missed, asked for, or understood by future generations. Sometimes we long for the consecrated rush of tree turnings and their need to sleep before snow's white scrolls of imperial wonder unroll, for the first butter yellow daffodils trumpeting the end of winter, for a salty summer cricket chorus at dusk, for those we've left behind now just brittle pictures. A recital of the Pacific's persistent wave cycles speaks to us in hushed or hang, I'm sorry, hushed or angry soundbites. Los Angeles with its imported palms is full of fault lines etching the psyche. We endure eccentric seasons as though stripped of reason and take an abundance of spring for granted. But the sun sets here.[735.25][735.25][applause] Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. The poem reminded me of John Fonte and another local artist, John Register. Okay, we have one more presentation this evening. And this proclamation is for Earth Month in the city of Malibu. Whereas in 1970, Americans joined together to demonstrate the concern for our environment, creating an informed public whose collective action resulted in the passage of laws to protect our air, water, and land. And whereas Earth Day on April 22nd is a national and international call to action for all citizens to join in a global effort to save the planet. And whereas the city of Malibu will participate in Earth Hour on March 30th and continue its tradition of month-long celebration emphasizing the importance of conserving water, energy, recycling, and living sustainably. And whereas the citizens worldwide are joining together to raise awareness and demonstrate their commitment to fighting climate change by supporting Earth Hour movement. And whereas the city's environmental sustainability department oversees the program for safety, protection, and sustainable use of the built and natural environments. And whereas the nonprofit Sustainable Surf created the Waste to Waves program to inspire people to think of waste as a resource and support innovative companies that have developed products made from waste. And whereas the city has participated in the Waste to Waves program since 2012 and has collected over 1,500 pounds of polystyrene packing materials from residents where they recycled, where they are recycled into 350 new surfboards without my name on them. And whereas the city now supports the expansion of this program to include the collection of used wetsuits at Malibu Becker Surf Shop. They will be repurposed into yoga mats. Now where, therefore be it resolved, the city of Malibu declares March 30th, 2019 through 2000, April 30th, 2019, as Earth Month in the city of Malibu and encourages everyone to adopt ecological, ocean-friendly practices within their lives and to reduce waste, preserve natural resources, and make our world a more sustainable place. And so, we have somebody here who'd like to speak for a moment. There you are. So this program started some time ago and it's working out very well. We thank you so much for continuing this. I know there's not a lot of profit in it and it's your passion.
Yes.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this proclamation is for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, thank you also for focusing on climate change a lot with the Sustainable Surf stuff. Really psyched on that.
Hey, thank you also for focusing on climate change a lot with the Sustainable Surf stuff. Really psyched on that.[982.94][982.94][applause]
Thank you.
Okay, take it. It's all yours.
All right. City council, thank you very much for honoring Sustainable Surf, for our work in Malibu on Waste Waves and basically using surfing as a way to tell sustainability stories to inspire people to take action. Sustainability is a word that's kind of boring and nerdy, but if you combine it with surf stories, everybody is interested and pays attention. So Waste to Waves has been very successful and I've been honestly surprised how engaged Malibu residents are with the idea of recycling styrofoam, which is not a fun, cool thing to do. And it's not easy to do either. You've got to drive it all down to the city hall at a certain time. We don't do it year-round. It's only certain times of the year. The city, the residents of Malibu are very interested in these ideas. So let's talk about how this relates to climate change because that's, that's the next focus that we need to solve. I'm a surfer. I was surfing El Porto the morning the Woolsey fire started in Manhattan Beach where I live, and I saw this little ball of smoke on the hill at 7:00 AM when I paddled out. And I was like, oh, there's a fire. I didn't know about that. Within the next 90 minutes, I watched the plume rise up to the strata, to the cumulus cloud and then collapse, you know, through three fire collapse replacement cycles, and it was an inferno within 90 minutes. I knew it was really bad as soon as I saw that. And that used to be a rare phenomenon, fires in California, but now it's the new normal. So what we need to do is figure out a way to inspire people to care about climate change. If you think sustainability is hard to work, worry, to think about, climate change is even harder to think about in a way that we actually take action and look at our own impact because it's a problem. Everybody has to, everyone uses fossil fuels. We can't expect politicians to take action when individuals aren't willing to do so. So we're launching a program called Sea Trees on World Water Day in June with the goal of getting individuals to look at their carbon footprint and help reforest the earth and especially blue carbon projects like mangroves and other, other forest projects that are close to oceans as a way to basically remove their carbon footprint and use it as an on-ramp to look at other ways to be more sustainable. So, thank you. So I would love to tell you more about that as we launch it and hopefully Malibu would like to partner in this project as well.
Look forward to it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You got your proclamation here.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I can do that. Thank you. Okay, and we have one more commendation. Oh, Ricardo, you forgot yours.
I did forget.
Yeah. I just started, ready to go for more and, and there it is.
Again, Jefferson.
Yeah, it was great. There we go.
Bring it in there.
Okay, we're done. I'm glad you didn't forget that. Okay, thank you for your time and patience through the ceremonial presentations. We learn a lot when we do these and we, now you see how your city council participates in everything from the arts to recycling. Now we're on to item 2A, written and oral comments from the public.
Nope, you're not. You got D.
Oh, D. I'm sorry, we're at D. Let me get back to the format here. Oh, staff update on disaster response and recovery. So that would be Riva's department. Okay, Craig, George, and Bonnie. Okay.
Good evening, blah, good evening, everybody. We just have a little update for you on how we're doing with the fire rebuild and recovery effort. Here's some updated statistics compared to our last meeting for temporary housing. We've now approved, planning department has now approved 21 applications for placement of temporary housing. That's three more compared to our, the last time we were here on March 11th. Planning verifications, there are 56 that have now been approved by the planning department. That's about nine more than last time. Nine of those are in the plan check process now, in the process for working towards getting their construction drawings approved for building permit issuance. Administrative plan reviews, nine of those have been applied for at this point and two have been approved. One of them is in the plan check process. The fire rebuild desk is continuing to get 20 to 30 consultations or visitors a day, and as many as four pre-design meetings a day are being held. We now have our contract staff on board and they are in the process of getting trained at the fire rebuild desk and on processing applications that will help take that burden off of the planning staff and free them up to get back to 100% on their regular caseload. The contract staff is also being trained on regular applications so that they'll be able to help with our, our regular caseload as well. Let's see. That's something for Craig to talk about in a moment. I, I wanted to also mention that, as I discussed last time, our local coastal program amendment for the fire rebuild code amendments is now effective and the municipal code part of that will be effective as of this Thursday, March 28th. One of the main parts of the municipal code amendment is that it will allow the rebuild plus 10% option for property owners to be processed as a planning verification rather than as a plan, as an administrative plan review. So it's a more streamlined process. For applicants that are interested in adding more to their home than just 10%, that process will, we've developed a two-step process for that. The applicant will need to process their planning verification and 10% and submit that into plan check. That is, that effectively establishes what your previously existing home was. And then the second step, for those who would like to do a basement or some other addition that's more than 10%, they would then process an administrative plan review. And the key things to remember with that are that in order to maintain a CDP exemption, you still have to be out of the appeal zone. And there can't be any other constraints on the project that would make you not eligible for the CDP exemption such as your property has ESHA on it, or it might have, be subject to a future improvement deed restriction from some previous coastal commission permit. So we'll be screening for those things as part of the application process. Or if somebody wants to make an appointment with staff, we can help them work through that screening stuff. Those applications cannot be processed over the counter. They require some additional review, but it's still faster than a coastal development permit. And those types of additions will need full review by a city specialist because it's a new part, it's new development that wasn't done previously on the site. Because essentially, this would be something where you're putting back your old house, plus you're adding a new addition. So the city geologist is going to need to look at it and, and those kinds of things. Let's see. So far, we've only had one person who's decided to not just put back what they had in an addition or just put back what they had. Only one person so far that's met with us has decided to kind of go with a brand-new house and process a coastal development permit for it. So that, I think because of all of the review that's required and the constraints that people have with their insurance and things like that, we're not finding so far that very many people are doing anything other than just trying to put back what they had plus the 10%. That's been the most popular thing so far. That could change as, as time goes on. At this point, I'll hand it over to Craig.
Good evening, Mayor Wagner, council. So a little bit of update on some of the things that are going on. I'm sure any of you have been out to the west end of town. You see quite a few trucks, the dump trucks driving up and down the street that are participating both in the state debris removal program and also in a local program. So in the local program, the first part of the bar chart here, we had 222 applications. We've issued 149 permits from the city to remove debris locally. The right-of-entry program, which is the state-run program, there's been 316 applications that have been submitted in and approved for debris removal. Five of those have now received full clearance where they've done the asbestos testing, the soil testing, and the debris's been removed. We've done a final inspection and they're cleared to begin the rebuilding process once they have building permits in place to do so. There have been confirmed from, this is the, there's a program that the county and the city is working closely with to identify all the properties. First, there are non-responsive properties. As you see on the, on the slide here, there's 25 non-responsive properties. We're working, we've actually, even as of today, reduced that number. These are properties that didn't opt in to the state program or opt out to the local program. And quite a few of these we're finding had small, say, sheds. What, what the basis for that is 120 square feet or more that was lost in the Woolsey fire. So some of these are just small outbuildings that we'll, we'll rectify and we'll find a solution that won't require them to opt in or out. So we're reducing that number. We hope to get that down. We're working with the county to reach any way we can these property owners, whether they're out of state, whether they're out of the country. But we're doing everything we can to try and reach them, to get them enrolled in one program or another. And through that process, we've also identified, as you can see on the slide, three confirmed properties that have been cleared without a permit. We've talked to those people. They will be submitting in applications for the opt-out program and going through the same process that other people have had to go through. This is just an outline of, in the plan check. So as we begin to rebuild, and we are actually on that path now, and the plan checks are middles. So there's been a number of foundation feasibility reports. These are people that are trying to reuse their foundation. We've received five feasibility reports that are being reviewed by California Code Check. As far as single-family rebuilds, there's three in plan check currently. And there was a converted accessory structure that we issued a permit to allow somebody to convert that to a habitable structure that they can move into. And then there was a number of detached storage buildings that were lost. We issued one permit to rebuild that. Now as far as building permits have been issued, we issued our first rebuild. This was actually a house that was under construction, almost near final, and then totally destroyed out at Point Doom. So they're in the process of rebuilding again. We have a couple of similar things that, they're going to be the first ones to move along on this process. So that was the first one we've issued. As far as the temporary housing, we had a number of applications. We're looking at, we've issued two permits so far, but there's quite a few people coming into the queue, talking with us and getting direction on, on how to do all that. We do have some handouts and them things that are online of how to proceed with that. And I think people have been very thankful for that. It gives them clear direction of what they need to do. On the local programs I mentioned before, we had 149 permits that were issued of the partial or secondary buildings that were damaged. We've issued 13 permits to do that. We've issued 24 electrical repair permits where the, the main meter may have been damaged or something on the house. So those were repaired and power is restored to those properties. And then we had 13 where there was minor damage, siding or something, or roof materials were damaged, and 13 permits have been issued. So we are on the beginning path to getting rebuilding commenced in the city, both through the plan check and the permitting. So there's, there's work finally going on. Go ahead with that. And with the debris removal, you can still visit, if you, if somebody has not opted into one of the programs, they can visit the debris removal site at the county over on Agora Road. LA County Fire Department has, as, as Mayor Wagner mentioned, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the fire department is here at city hall. the fire department is here at City Hall from 8:00 to 12:00 on those days. There's quite a few people that have come in. I really appreciate that they've had staff here, and it's been very helpful for a lot of folks, along with the news that we heard tonight, and hopefully more to come soon. And so I'll let Bonnie talk briefly about this, and I'll have a little comment about it as well.
So, city staff is planning to host two rebuild workshops with, followed by counter hours with all the city departments and other agencies, such as county, fire, and waterworks districts, to allow property owners and professionals to get answers to all their fire rebuild questions and present, our staff side of the presentations will be updates on all the latest information that, that we've got, and processes, and things like that. So on this Thursday, starting at 2:00, will be the presentation and counter hours geared towards professionals. It's, these meetings are going to be open to everybody, any property owner or resident or member of the public that wants to attend, but we're trying to gear the content to, tailor it to suit professionals. And then on Sunday, this Sunday, at, starting at 2:00 PM, will be the same sort of program geared towards property owners. So it'll be, you know, a little less jargony and a little easier for people who don't work in these areas all the time to understand. So we encourage everybody to attend and also have time with all of the different staff people that will be here for counter hours following the presentation, starting at 3:30 through 5:30. And then there are, our community services department is offering some programs. For example, on Monday, April 22nd, there will be a mindful meditation program as part of its resiliency program. So that's another event for people in the community to look forward to.
And then this evening, I also heard a couple of mentions about resiliency in building, and so the city is planning, and the environmental sustainability department, some workshops that will be hosting for resiliency. The first will be the workshop on April 9th. It's the resiliency with the tree people, so it's more about, again, nonprofit groups, but this is about how you can grow plants but be more protective of your property for that. Then we have another resiliency with the workshop with the Green Building Architects and Engineers Association, so it'll be presenting ways to achieve that, and that will be later in April. And then the final one is with the, it's the architectural, so it's the, it's a rebuilding, rebuilding resiliency strategies workshop that will be on May 15th. So we are looking into and encouraging folks to look into ways to build resiliency as they rebuild their homes. But this is also applicable to any kind of new construction that may be there as well.
And then finally, we, these are the, the same resources that we post online, or post on the slide each week, and just for reference for members of the public. MalibuCity.org/rebuilds or MalibuCity.org/debris will get you directly to websites that have information pertaining to those frequently asked questions and things like that. You can also sign up for emergency alerts and find other resources at MalibuRebuilds.org. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Craig. Council members, any comments? I have one quick one after you're done.
Just a, a quick one. I just, could you walk us through what the geology requirement is on just a like-for-like rebuild? I've heard a couple of comments, people were caught off guard, they had to do anything related to geology on a site that had been there for decades.
It's really kind of going to go on a case-by-case basis. So let's just say they got a planning verification. Are they going to keep their slab? Are they going to add the 10%? Were there's additional geology or additional foundation? Was the slab removed, and now there's just loose soil that's on the site that may have to be recompacted? I heard a couple of comments, and I'd be willing at any time to talk with those folks if they want to come in, and we can sit down with the city geologist and review each of those on a case-by-case basis. If you're going to, usually as an engineer, you're going to need a soils recommendation for bearing capacity of the soil for the engineer to design it to. One of the options is also to go to code minimums whereby you would just design it to a code minimum and probably preclude having a geology report. But if the foundation was removed, there has to be, there could be just what we refer to as a reconnaissance report, where a geologist may go out there and just make a recommendation, maybe the soil needs to be recompacted around the footprint of the proposed building. But we'll talk to anybody that has any questions and try and resolve their issues.
Okay, I just think it was catching some people off guard, as I thought it'd be worth commenting on.
Thank you, Mikey. Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank the community for their patience with all the trucks. The vendors are doing the best job they can. You can go to a website, which I check almost daily, but on Wednesday or Thursday last week, we'd moved 101,000 tons out of 90265, and that equaled about 55,000 pounds per house in the way of removal pounds. So it's a lot of material to get out of there, and thank you for your patience. I've had several calls on it, that they wanted to move faster, but it's a lot of material, and they're doing their best. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Craig.
Okay, now we're on public comment 2A. First up is Elizabeth Stevens, and Elizabeth is followed by, oh, Bruce, Bruce Silverstein. Elizabeth, are you here? Okay, I believe Elizabeth has already left the room. Bruce, you're up. Bruce is followed by Delia. Okay, and that's, third up is Deborah.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Operation Recovery, which is a nonpartisan community organization created to help victims of the Woolsey Fire recover and rebuild their lives as quickly and smoothly as possible. We have and will continue to provide workshops and other assistance to those who lost their homes. I'm here tonight on behalf of Operation Recovery to urge the city council to waive all permit fees for those rebuilding their homes in Malibu. This will be an important factor in helping people be able to rebuild. Many longtime citizens of Malibu are faced with the threat of not being able to rebuild their homes because of cost. They're underinsured. Building permit fees have been paid on these homes once. There's no reason to make them pay again under these circumstances. This is a very different situation than someone building a new home or voluntarily doing a rebuild. If the Woolsey Fire had not ripped through our community, none of the community members who now require permits to rebuild would require such permits, and the city of Malibu would not be receiving any revenue from permits that would not have been sought or required. Even if the city of Malibu incurs some costs to process the permits, the city is in a much better position to absorb and recover those costs than are the individuals who lost their homes. Those who have experienced the trauma of losing their homes in the Woolsey Fire disaster should be provided every benefit the city of Malibu has to offer. Fee-free building permits are the least that can be provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Deborah Bianco, and Deborah is followed by Ken Luskin.
Hi, excuse me. Hi, I'm Deborah Bianco with the Cornucopia Foundation, president, co-founder since 1998, serving this community. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I don't think the council realizes how important it is for us to get a temporary use permit. I think there might have been a misunderstanding last time I was here and spoke. I do know the difference between a temporary use permit and a conditional use permit. In 2005, the Malibu Farmers Market was issued 14 consecutive temporary use permits in a row, if not more, until the city of Malibu can figure out how to issue us a conditional use permit, so we know it can be done again. Our farmers market is in jeopardy. We are working hand-in-hand with the college. The college is so excited because we already flipped the market. You all have documents explaining how. So by us flipping the market, they thought, and this is what I think they thought, that the city council had already given us our temporary use permit, so we can hold our market, so there would be parking for the residents, because there is none. People circle and circle around, they want to come here and speak. You guys got plenty of other stuff to deal with, and I realize that. But we need you. We need you. I want to be able to go in there tomorrow, and I am going to go in there tomorrow to pull out an application, just like the Boys and Girls Club did, just like we did in 2005, for a temporary use permit until you can possibly give us a conditional use permit. Not only will you be helping us, the, the Malibu Farmers Market, you will be helping the college run things smoothly, because we've given them their space, the county would be happy, you would be helping three different organizations work together. These are organizations that always work with you. Please help us. I'm coming back tomorrow for an application, guys. Help us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deborah. Ken Luskin, you're up, and Ken is followed by Joel Schulman.
Evening. You all know me, Ken Luskin. I first want to say I agree. Charging people to rebuild permits, I think is shameful. Okay? Now, in my opinion, most of the staff work diligently. I just wanted to clear that up. Someone was trying to, from the last time I was here. But for far too long, there has been a huge problem with our city government. I call it Malibu's dirty secret. In June 1990, the people of Malibu elected the first city council for the newly formed city. That city council then adopted a city manager form of government, which gave all the operational control to a person who was not elected by or accountable to the people of Malibu. These are facts. For decades, it's been known that wildfires are the greatest threat to the people of Malibu. This is a fact. The first responsibility of government is to protect its citizens and their property. This is a fact. Since formation, the city of Malibu has spent next to nothing on fire protection. Since inception, the city staff has ballooned to almost 100 employees, but none of them are fire protection experts. These are facts. These facts are also evidence. They are evidence of a failure within the Malibu city government. Based on all the evidence, the logical conclusion is for the city council to abolish the city manager form of government. The people of Malibu never approved of giving all the operational control to an unelected person. The mayor should not be powerless and operationally subordinate to an unelected person. Malibu's governmental dysfunction was on full display during the last catastrophe. It's time to fix this mess, which is why I am requesting that the city council hold a special meeting next week to discuss and vote on the abolition of the city manager form of government. I sincerely hope that this city council will make the obvious changes required to fix what is wrong with our city government, because doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting different results, is the definition of insanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And Ken, you're followed by Joel. Joel is followed by Gina, and Gina has extra minutes. Good evening, Joel.
Hi. You know, I'm really here for the last item, but I thought I'd take advantage and say something I've meant to, which is, what really bothers me in talking to people, both before and after the fire, is the issue of insurance. How do you get the right insurance? It's basically not possible for an individual to figure this out. The idea of talking to your insurance agent does not work. We, we all know that. And we all know there's five or 10 or 15 different things that goes wrong before, when you're getting the insurance, and there's dozens of things that go wrong after you're, you're in trouble. So the ordinary person cannot figure this out. What I'd like to suggest, and I think, for example, there was a Pepperdine workshop on this some week, months ago, some kind of regularly scheduled expert, maybe biannual, you know, well-advertised, to come in, you know, a retired insurance agent who really knows our area and knows his stuff, things like that.
We have the head of the insurance for the state of California coming to do a presentation here in Malibu on April 28th. I've been on him.
We need that. And, but I'm, what I'm talking about is doing it regularly scheduled, every other, you know, twice a year, forever, that people can make use of. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Joel. And it looks like Sina, you're up, and you have extra time.
Mayor Wagner, honorable council members, thanks for hearing me tonight. My name is Sina Samimi. I'm here with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler, and Mitchell. I represent Pacific Eagles Holding Corporation and Malibu Pacific Doom LLC. We submitted, my, my firm submitted a letter to you on March 19th, last week, briefly discussing some of the issues that I'll go over tonight. It was sent by my partner, Ben Resnick. But essentially, we represent the property owner of Cavalieri Apartments, and that's at 6489 Cavalieri Road in the Point Doom area of, of the city of Malibu. And the property consists of 68 units of luxury two- and three-unit buildings, condos, and they're in four buildings on Cavalieri Road. These units have been vacant for over the last two years, and our client has put in over $35 million into renovating them and bringing them up to a standard that they've never seen before, and they are ready to come onto the market. We have 68 units, and we've heard a lot about the tragic fires this evening already, and the night's just beginning. You haven't even gotten to your consent, past your consent calendar. And these are much-needed units in the city of, in the city of Malibu. And what's happened with the emergency declaration that was voted upon by the council, it has some restrictions on how much can be charged for rent, even for units that are just newly coming on the market or have been off the market for the last year or over a year, two years. And what that restriction does is that it, it ties the amount that you're allowed to rent a newly rented unit that's coming on the market, it ties it to the HUD rates. And when you compare the HUD rates, and we, we've attached an exhibit that, that hopefully you've all seen by now, but we've, when you compare the HUD rates and what we're allowed to charge versus the fair market value in this area, there's a large discrepancy. And on average, it's a little under $2,000 per unit in this building, and it's basically prevented the sale. This mark, this was on the, the market for sale to, to be brought on, and the sale was during the due diligence process, it came up that, you know, there's this HUD restriction, and it's not going to be able to, to sell, and these units are not going to be able to come on until this problem is resolved. The exhibit that we've presented to you explains in detail what the HUD rates are and what we're able to charge based on the emergency declaration versus what the actual fair market rates are in this area. And we believe that this is an unintended consequence. We don't think that the city council actually intended to prevent this many units from coming onto the market at a fair market rent value. So due to the unintended consequence, we wanted to ask that the, that the city council put this on the agenda for the April 8th meeting, and we would be happy to work with the city attorney's office, who we've already been in touch with, to try to come to a solution that would allow units that have been off the market for a year or more to set their rates at fair market value, and then thereafter be subject to, to the declaration of emergency. I am here and available for questions if you had, if you had questions. We have also representative of the owner of the Cavalieri Apartments here to answer any questions if you had anything specific as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sina. And Laura, let's see, Lanise is up. Lanise Sorin, Chamber of Commerce. And Lanise is followed by Paul Grisanti, and Paul is followed by Scott Dietrich. And Lanise, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. City Council, Riva Christie, thank you. Hi, Malibu. I'm Lanise Sorin, the chairwoman of the Malibu Chamber of Commerce. I'm happy to report some new news. April 1st, the Chamber of Commerce launches our Shop Malibu campaign, hashtag Shop Malibu. And we've created an opportunity for multiple Malibu shopping centers to join together to help regenerate businesses. I want to thank for all of our participants. I want to thank for all of our participating shopping centers, which are Point Doom Village, The Park at Cross Creek, Tranca's Country Mart, Malibu Country Mart, and the Malibu Lumber Yard. The Shop Malibu consists of six months of social media campaign led by Chris Weisner at Vivid Candy, and PR with Maris Somerville and Somerville Associates, print campaigns with both 805 Magazine and Malibu Magazine. So, April 1st, we are looking forward to joining all, or not all, but most of our Malibu shopping centers together. It was pretty special, for the first time, we all joined together and got everybody a beautiful opportunity and cost-effective, so we're looking forward to helping Malibu regenerate in many ways. Another great piece of information, the Malibu Chamber of Commerce proudly announces that we have acquired All Things Malibu through an agreement with All Things Incorporated. We are honored and excited to help support Malibu in every way with this tremendous tool of All Things Malibu. We want to thank Skip, and Ryan, and James for trusting us, and will make you proud. We would like to invite you to our events. April 2nd is our mixer with XO Bloom, 966 Westlake Boulevard. April 7th, from 10 to 10, we will be having my grand opening at the Point Doom location, and I hope to see all of you, and all of you, you get a free present if you mentioned tonight. April 16th, we're launching at Duke's our Luncheon Learn. For those of you who want more information, please visit malibu.org, and I'm honored to launch this Luncheon Learn as being the first speaker, and I look forward to any and all of you who would like to speak to let me know. And we look forward to working with Riva for State of the City. We've also had our first meeting. And on a personal night, I would love to thank the Sheriff Department and the volunteer Sheriff Department of Malibu and Station 71 last night for checking in. We had an incident, and they were very fast on their recall, and I'm personally very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lanise, for all the updates from the chamber. Paul, you're up. Paul's followed by Scott, followed by Graham Clifford.
Jefferson, I want to thank you particularly for taking the time to come down into here to make your presentations, and then do a good impersonation of me talking into the mic like this, so we could only see the top of your head. I want you to watch it on TV in a couple days and look at it and go, you know, we really need to have a more upright kind of a podium here, because when people are watching from home, top of everybody's head is not a good thing.
Especially yours, Paul.
Especially, I'm surprised the glare hasn't hurt you by now.
Why do you think I want to put my hat on?
Now, that hurts.
Can we add 30 seconds to Paul's comments? Thank you.
Give me more time, I'll insult as long as you want. Basically, what I want to really thank you for was not letting me speak to Mr. Pastrero while he was here, so I was forced to talk to him in the hallway, and in the hallway, he agreed, and I'm sure he would much rather have agreed in public, to start the engineering drawings for the work that Don was talking about, so that we are getting ever closer to building the tank at Ensignal and those pipes. And I think that that's something that, you know, we need that done. Ensignal's got to get done. That's the bleeding sore right now, although we have a lot of other peoples that at least have bandages on them, but we need to get that done, and I'm sure that you, that, I'm sure that Riva is doing an admirable job of reminding them daily of our needs in Malibu. And I want to thank her again for what she's doing that allows me to be as big of an idiot as I want, and, and she makes me look good. So, she needs a bad person to point to as a reason. So, please, 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 work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We'll work on the elevation of that speaker. Graham, you're up, and then Graham is followed by Lance Simmons. And you're followed, Lance, you're following Graham.
So, I'm, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Riva and Christie. I'm here to talk about a couple of things, in following on from Mayor Wagner's announcement of the Earth Month proclamation and the Earth Day that follows that. I'm sure, I want to talk about glyphosate alias Roundup. Roundup has just recently been banned by the Los, by LA County in light of the massive lawsuits that are coming down against it. Now, I'm not here to judge whether they're warranted or not, but I thought that in light of, again, Malibu's mission statement, we ought to be out in the forefront, I'm trying not to put my head down, Paul. We ought to be in the forefront of trying to be environmentally friendly, and Roundup has been, you know, talked about for years and years and years, and it's finally getting heavy, but I thought we should maybe consider banning it and following LA County, their lead. Secondly, I want to talk about the perennial problem of anticoagulant rodenticides. I'm sure you're all aware that P-53 has now been hauled in for mange, which is the fifth mountain lion that's contracted mange, probably because of anticoagulant rodenticides. The mountain lions are not the only sufferers. There's the bobcats, the owls, anybody you can basically imagine is prone to it. And I just think that, I don't know why we haven't banned this stuff, rodenticides, a long time ago, you know, plenty of other areas have. We still haven't, and we're here in Malibu, and we're using rodenticides and killing the wildlife. I mean, the Malibu Times came up with a great quote about, about this particular issue. It says, "We've got to, we've got to do something about the rat poison chain of death." That's what it is. And we ought to do, and we ought to do something about it. So, that's it, really. I'm also in favor, in full support, Rick, of your, of your 7A or whatever the agenda item is, the Assembly Bill eight, eight, 788. And I think the city council, you should be able to convince everybody to support that bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham. Much appreciated. And Scott Dietrich, you'll follow Lance, okay? Because you have two speaker slips.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I want to talk a little bit tonight about an issue which has already, already been raised, which is the building permit fees. I happen to be vice president of the Malibu Democratic Club, steering committee member of the Operation Recovery, and newly appointed Public Works Commissioner. And I'm not speaking on behalf of any of those organizations tonight. This is personal, from what I can see, as far as the rebuild. And I want to offer this suggestion. On the building permit fees issue, as you're going through your policy discussions, which I know you're actively involved in this, as you're going through that, take a unique approach. Instead of considering why you should do this, consider or frame the parameters around why you shouldn't, because that'll, that'll greatly expedite the process. There are very few reasons why you shouldn't, but there are reasons, which is why I don't support a blanket waiver, because I want to have, and you should want to have the flexibility to consider things, variables, which might not make people eligible. For instance, I've spoken with several homeowners who tell me that their insurance covers the fees. So, in that instance, you could have an exception. You don't, you don't need, I understand that there are financial responsibilities and budgetary issues that need to be addressed here as well. So, maintain the flexibility to consider particular exemptions, and I think it'll help expedite the process. But this is an issue which really needs to be looked at, I think, in a very expeditious way. And thank you for your time tonight, and I will look forward to helping out in whatever way that I can, in any of the positions that, that I've mentioned, or any otherwise. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lance. Go ahead back there and meet Bruce on those fees. Scott Dietrich on 2A, and then, then we'll move into 2B.
Okay. On 2, 2B on commission report—
Well, we're on 2A. That's the speaker slip.
Oh, 2A first, thank you. Okay. Woolsey Fire. Thank you, Karen and Mikey, for these sessions that you have had, to find out, to try to get to the bottom of what's going on, and I really appreciate the efforts of the council. Jefferson came to a fire meeting that we held in Eastern Malibu, and, but I also wanted to give a plug. There's a lot individual homeowners can do to make their own home fire safe. There's something called Fire Safe Alliance, and they show you little things, they're not giant, little things you can do to harden your house against fires, and it's free. And on April 8th, that Camp 8, Fire Camp 8, there's going to be a Fire Alliance meeting for Eastern Malibu, and then here in city council chambers, on the 9th, the Australian consulate under tree people auspices is going to hold a similar type meeting from their experience. So, for anybody here in the audience, or those watching on TV, there are things that you can do, they're not very expensive, and whether you stay or whether you leave, you can protect your home. So, please come to these meetings. Onto 2B. Jim Palmer is chairman of Public Works, and I serve with him, so we have a couple things to bring up.
Thank you. Scott is also the vice chairman, and we have been asking staff for review of certain projects. Sometimes we feel like we may be circumvented. Several of these projects have come in front of the city council without our review, so we're asking for guidance as to, should we be reviewing these projects before they become an agenda item with the city council? Or, you know, we're asking for some help in trying to determine, you know, the best use of our time and to review these projects, so that when we are asked if we've reviewed them, and we haven't reviewed them, we would like to have a good answer.
And I'll give you an example. The anchor pedestal issue came up, and when I saw that there was $50,000 budgeted for this, I know it sounds like a lot of money, especially at a time when we've got a million dollars, over a million dollars in expenses from Woolsey in terms of the disaster that will be unreimbursed, and that will have a lot of money that we're going to hope to get back from FEMA, but it could take five years. So, I'm going, do we need to spend this? So, we said, okay, can we get a picture of the anchor? We've never seen it. We'd like to know what we're talking about, and we don't have that. I wonder, have you guys seen a picture of the anchor? Okay, at least you have, but we didn't. And, you know, if, if we're going to give our input on these things, we, we need this information, but we'd like you to give us that direction. Do you want us, at what point do you want us to review? Preliminary? If that's okay with you, that's fine, or do we need to see final before it comes up and gets voted on here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott and Jim, and appreciate that comment, and I think the bid was for 42, correct? And there is a picture in our book here. Okay. Yep. All right. Moving on to council updates, and we want to start on the left or right, Skylar or Rick? Oh, Riva's up.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I have a few announcements. Tomorrow evening, Caltrans will be holding a public meeting here at City Hall at 5:30 to discuss the proposed crosswalk and potential signal at the Malibu Seafood Area on PCH. This is a project that we first learned about about two months ago, that Caltrans was considering doing as a safety measure, and at my request, that they hold a town hall meeting, they are doing that to get some feedback from the community before they move forward. According to Caltrans, the project didn't actually warrant the need for a meeting, which is why they were going forward, but they did take into account my concerns and have agreed to have a town hall meeting. So, anybody who has concerns or questions about that proposed project should come tomorrow at 5:30 here. There also will be, on April 9th, a bus study meeting held by Metro. That'll be April 9th at 6:30 here at City Hall. I'd like to remind everybody that the general fund grant applications for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 are due on March 29th, and those need to be submitted here at City Hall by 4 o'clock. On April 28th, as Councilmember Peak mentioned, the State Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara will be holding a town hall here at City Hall, and it will also include a presentation, and then the option for residents to meet one-on-one with staff from his office to discuss insurance issues. Assemblymember Richard Bloom will be having a wildfire rebuilding workshop here at City Hall on April 13th at 1 o'clock. And we have on April 5th, our Spring Hopping, which is our Easter egg hunt for kids ages 1 to 12, and that's at Bluffs Park, and if you need a dose of cuteness, I highly recommend that you attend this event. And also, we'll be having an amended agenda released this week for the planning commission scheduled for April 1st. I just wanted to respond to a few of the questions that came up from members of the public. First, if anybody has questions about the rebuilding process, I highly encourage them to please come to City Hall, speak with a member of our planning staff at our rebuild counter, which is in the upstairs lobby here at City Hall, and you can also contact me directly if you have questions, if you have concerns, if you don't know where to start. City and the city staff is here to help you with that, and we do have the answers that can help you move forward. The Farmers Market, if Deborah's still here, is scheduled to be brought forth for the parking issue to council on April 8th, so that will be resolved at the next meeting. The issue to discuss waiving of fees for rebuilds will come before the council on April 24th, to allow the council an opportunity to discuss that as they discuss next year's budget and the proposed fee schedule. And then, just to speak to the commissioners that spoke, every year, the city council adopts a work plan for all of its commissions that comes to the council in June, and at that time, they have the ability to add projects to the commission. Those work plans go to the commissions themselves before they're brought to the city council, so you'll have the ability to ask for certain tasks. We'll, I don't know if we'll discuss it in detail, but the anchor project was discussed by both the Parks and Rec Commission and the Culture Arts Commission at the direction of council, so that's why I didn't take a stop at your commission, but certainly, I'm happy to add any tasks that you're willing to take on at the direction of the council as part of the work plan process. So, that concludes my remarks, unless council has any questions for me.
Looks like we're moving on. Do we want to start, Rick or Skylar? Which end would you like to start at?
I'll take it. Thank you to Chief Osby and Mark Pastrero. They're the key players here. I know they're already gone, and I already said thanks, but that's big for them to come down here from the mountain and actually take an interest in our little Peewee towns rebuild effort, so that's really good, and thank you very much for making that happen, Riva. Let's see. Joel, I appreciate what you said about the insurance thing. I think you're right. You know, it's like, when the dust settles after all this thing, there are some great lessons learned from people who had enough insurance and people who did not have enough insurance, and I think that it's part of our responsibility to make sure that, that's the one thing that, if this ever happens to people, you don't want to be cut, caught short on. And that's an excellent point, and I think you're right. It has to be kind of an ongoing effort, so thanks very much for that idea. I'm going next week to Sacramento to testify in support, along with the mayor of Laguna Beach, in support of Senate Bill 584 Witchwood, and I'm reading from its summary here, would expedite opportunities for local jurisdictions located in tier two, tier three, excuse me, fire threat areas to underground current overhead electrical infrastructure for wildfire mitigation. The bill would also establish a wildfire mitigation oversight board to develop and implement policies that reduce the looming threat of more wildfires. implement policies that reduce the looming threat of more wildfires. It's going to be an ongoing effort to try and bend the universe to our will. And it's a step in the right direction though. And it's nice of the mayor of Laguna Beach to reach out and ask for our help in this. And of course, we're all over it. So I just want to let you know that is happening. Graham, I hear you on the rodenticides. We're moving in the right direction. Thank you very much for your concern for all those critters out there. I totally agree with you. And that's it. Oh, one thing I want to ask Kristi, have you been talking to these, this firm about the Cavalier Apartments? Do you have any comments about that at all?
I read the letter carefully. I understand the issue. It's just a kind of a policy question on how you want the reach, how far you want the reach of the anti gouging ordinance to go. It's not a forever problem because eventually the declaration will get lifted and the anti gouging ordinance won't apply anymore. But that, that's where they are at the moment. So they're looking, there is a fix. It's in their letter. They've proposed it. If the council's interested, we could certainly put something together and bring it back to you for your consideration. If you want to wait it out, then we won't do that. So.
I think it's a good idea just because there are so many apartments and you know, everyone's screaming about having rental units, et cetera. And it seems like something that probably would be a good idea for us to make a decision on one way or the other, whether it's hold out or take action.
Do we need a consensus or?
Shaking heads will do the trick.
Shaking heads and.
I see that, okay.
We don't want it to become an Airbnb.
We'll bring it back.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Skylar or Mike? Oh, okay. Okay, Mikey, you're up.
Those 68 units, yes, we, we had an extensive talk. Karen was on the call too with that team. And I was horrified. I'm going to just call an airstrike on myself. When we did that ordinance, I asked, I think, three times what 160% of HUD meant, and nobody could answer the question. And I nodded my head anyhow and agreed to it. And those units are priced in Malibu pricing. They're brand new and we have all these people looking for places to live. So I think we totally blew it on that ordinance. And as far as that, we didn't, that was unintended consequence. So I think, I'm glad it's going to come back because it just seems like these units, I mean, at least, I mean, it's a lot of units and they're in the price range that insurance will pay for them. And they're brand new and ready to go.
Let's just wait until we bring it back and then we can all discuss it with all the information in front of you.
I think that's why I think we should bring it back to discuss it. That's exactly what I was saying. But thank you for clarifying my remarks. I appreciate it. Lanise, thank you for the update. And I'm glad to see that the Lunch and Learn program I was once in charge of is actually going to happen. Never actually happened with me, so I think that's awesome. I'm excited. I would love to come. And if I come, I'll probably end up speaking one way or another, right? So I'm glad to see the chamber doing so much and moving forward. That makes me extremely happy. Ken, I don't know, are you still here, Ken? Are you usually over that way? Hey, Ken. I, I, you know, I don't know much. We emailed about this a bit. We've emailed about different forms of government. I'm still busy. I don't have a clue if there's a movement on, you know, changing our form of government, so be it. I'm just going to keep working away and try and get people back in their houses for now. But I just wanted you to know I heard you. And hang on, lots of good stuff here. And then of course, there's just my normal list that I refuse to read all of because you'll all shoot me, fall asleep, one of those. Something interesting, an email today by Mary Stanley, which should be in the record, talked about city council policy number seven, doing two reviews a year. I did not know that or how that implements, but it led me to reading all of the policies in more detail that we have here in the city. And this one is interesting because the thing on waiving fees, I'm, I, I get it. I totally get it. I think we have to look at it. We have to look at it quickly. I agree. City policy number two doesn't allow the city, I don't want, I don't want, I might get this wrong, to reduce expenses to certain groups of people and not others. I'm interpreting that maybe wrong, but that's how I read it. So that's something we got to figure out because it's an uneven application. Policy number three, which relates to the city finances going through this fire, is we have to make sure we leave our general reserve, it can't go below 50%. So the impact on all of it with additional staff and the fire, it's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to it. So while I totally agree, we have to expeditiously look at this. I notice those policies have to be considered in there. And, well, there you go. Things that on my list, I, we're going to look at, I'd like to get my commissioners' business cards. I like my commissioners to be really busy. And I really give them a hard time and want them to get a lot of stuff done. And then I'm too busy to spend enough time with them, but I'm working on it. I am interested and I've heard some people talking about some of our city streetlights and the dark skies ordinance. I am curious to learn more about that and I'm going to work on that on my own. I appreciate, I want to thank Riva for really stepping in, helping resolve some temporary power issues with some people in the Malibu park area. That was excellent. Really appreciate that. SCE and the trees, I, I'm just hearing, I, I don't know. I know they're coming to prune the trees. I know we got to keep the wires safe. I know that's what the lot's set up for. But I'm worried about the impact on some of our native trees, our protected trees. And I'm concerned in a couple neighborhoods, Bonzel being one. So I, I just want to express that. I don't have the answer. I gather SCE has some sort of legislative ability to, to prune away, but I'm just concerned on that. I'm concerned on the Cuthbert regulator. Everyone know what that is, right? No, nobody knows. Okay. Jefferson knows. Karen knows. So if you're up on the Malibu park and you build a new place, you have to put in money to pay for this regulator a resident paid for that helps get water flow over there, right? I'll make this quick. But it turns out if you burn down, maybe you do too. So to me, that, I don't know. I'm worried about that application. It doesn't seem like it was intended for people that burned down to have to pay into, into that. So just something on my mind. Been hearing a lot of complaints lately on airplane noise in Malibu. And, and Rick was gracious to spend time and catch me up on that. It's, it's the FAA and it's not going to be easy. I'll sum that up for you. Karen and I have been super busy, as you can imagine, with our committee work. We've met with a lot of people recently. Kevin Kircher from the CHP, a bunch of the fire chiefs again, Richardson, Maroni and Williams. We had our Sunday meeting and it was great. Certain people were really, really putting great work, including Scott Dietrich. Appreciate what you sent afterwards, a lot of details. A lot of other peoples contributed to what was a pretty powerful day. Beyond that, I've been meeting with a number of residents at their property on their burnouts because as a planning commissioner, I learned if you don't go there, you really can't understand the issues. So I've made an effort to do that. And pesticides. Kristi and I missed an appointment to talk to this, about this today. But basically, just give me a second here. My trauma from the fire, and I recognized it today when I was being, I think filmed by these people over here, really brought it back that my trauma that I'm, I can't talk about still, I can't do it, is what I saw happening with wildlife. What I saw happening to animals, the innocent of the innocent. While I was fighting the fire, those times where I was crying, I'll leave it at that. And to hear so many stories from my friends up in the mountains now that these animals that survived are suffering and then you can just tell they're poisoned, is, I just, I can't do that. I can't handle that. So I am confused as I sit here right now. I'm sorry to do this, but the city council before I was on had agendized bringing back this issue last May. And I understand, and I really respect our city attorney Kristi, but I don't understand her analysis and I don't understand why this hasn't come back. Maybe I'm missing something, but this like crosses a personal line that I can't, I just can't do it. So I'm sorry I have to bring that up. So I don't know if I need to agendize that coming back, but if I do, I would just ask for consensus here if anyone else is interested in that coming back.
That was one of my comments, as you see here. And as you see here, I have it written down and so we can get a consensus right now to bring that back as soon as possible. Keon Schulman has been working on this for eight years.
Just for, just for the record, while you're talking about that item, I did meet with them over the weekend and while looking at the whales, it was very, very important that that come back immediately.
So I sense we have consensus?
You certainly do.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that and I'm sorry if I'm, get a little emotional about it. Just, just, it's, it's, that one's hard for me. It's really personal. I just can't walk away from it. Last thing, I want to talk about the state of the recovery. So what's dawned on me the last couple of weeks is we are now entering this new phase in the rebuild. And I'm trying to identify what the phases are and be there to help people. And the phases that I'm realizing is that we're, everyone that burned down is now at the point where they're realizing the huge task that's about to hit them on rebuilding their house. There's hundreds of people in Malibu that have probably never built a house. They don't want to build a house. They hadn't planned to build a house. They don't have the ability to build a house. And yet suddenly they have to know how to build a house. So it's going to be hard. It's going to be hard. And I saw that reality strike a number of people at the Rebu event Saturday at Tranqus, which is an excellent event. And I really, hats off to Doug and his crew for putting that together. Great event. So I saw this coming a few weeks ago and I reached out to a couple of people at Operation Recovery about, hey, we, people in Malibu are going to need, need help, not just on what they do, but the actual nuts and bolts. You know, how much is a foundation? Where do you, who do you go to for cabinets? Wait, what do you mean I got to get 200, you know, pulls for my drawers? I mean, all these details that are overwhelming. It goes on and on and on and on. I, I never talked to Karen and Arnold about it, but I didn't get maybe the response I wanted. So at the Rebu, I noticed that that's kind of what they're doing. And I've talked to Doug about it and I think he's going to try and, we're going to meet more and talk about how to fill that void on not just the rebuild process, but the nitty gritty of rebuilds. And I just wanted to point that out as I think it's going to be, for some people, some people are embracing it and like, wow, new journey, great. Other people, this is hard. If you have a full-time job already and you have to build a house, heads up, it's a full-time job. So I just wanted to raise that and I won't take any more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, for your help and guidance. I look forward to that rodenticide recycle. And Karen, you're up.
Okay, thanks to everybody who's been calling, emailing, bumping into me and talking particularly about recovery. As Mikey said, we're continuing our work with the ad hoc committee. We've had a lot of meetings toward that end. Some other things I've done, I was contacted by the United Way. They were here from Maryland and they were sponsoring something called the Alternative Spring Break. And I spoke at their event. I appreciate that opportunity. They participated in more than one beach cleanup along with the Surf Rider Foundation here. I had a meeting with Mike Harial. He's our rep from SoCal Gas, learning more about the gas company. And I realized we need them. I am on the committee for the Santa Monica College project. We had a meeting with the trustees and president and project manager of the building that's being built right now, right near here. I'm excited for that. I wish it would open sooner. It does not open until the fall of 2022, but be ready to sign up for classes. Be ready to participate in program choices for classes before then. Not sure when that'll be. Mikey and I went to, along with Riva, our first ever LA County Local Advocacy Day sponsored by Contract Cities. It was downtown. We met with Sheriff Villanueva, Chief Osby, two of the LA County Supervisors addressed us. Very enlightening day. We had our second disaster response and recovery ad hoc committee, community meeting on Saturday, March 17th. Some did wear green. We had about 40 people in attendance. We went for over three hours. You can watch that video on the city website. If you want to email the committee, that email address again is recoveryadhoc@malibu city.org. We are going to be setting up a third community meeting. I don't know when yet, but we will highly publicize it. I had a long meeting, a half-day meeting with Keon Schulman from Poison Free Malibu. She is a treasure trove of information. As Mikey said, she's been working on this for eight years, is an absolute encyclopedia. And yeah, I fully, fully agree. We need to get back to banning anticoagulants, rodenticides. I'd like to see a raptor pole. Let's just put up one and see what happens. That's what I say. And thank you for bringing it up, Graham. I went to our COG meeting for the first time in a very long time. Malibu is not the SCAG, Southern California, remind me? Association of Governments Representative. It is now David Shapiro from the City of Calabasas. Mikey and I met with our Edison rep. There's a lot going on with that. And this past Friday, I drove up Bonzel just to see with my own eyes how close the power poles and lines are, especially to some of the sycamore trees. If you haven't driven up Bonzel, I recommend it just for the pure joy of seeing 250-year-old trees, along with a lot of other trees. There are some that are right, practically intertwined growing up within the trees. I drove to the back of Bonzel and I was really sorry to see, I didn't realize until just a few days ago, that Zuma Canyon orchids had burned down. And I've spent many enjoyable hours touring around their greenhouses. I did get to speak to Ole, who runs it. And while we were talking, a red-tailed hawk came and was sitting on the fence right in front of us. And I took a picture of it and right after that, it lifted off. If you want to see it, it's on my social media. It was really dramatic and made me wonder about this SoCal Edison plan. There's got to be a way to somehow mesh environmental protection with, with environmental protection. Okay? So I'm going to be looking into that some more. I've had some talks with my Public Safety Commissioner Hans Litz about moving forward with strengthening our communications capability. And we're going to have a meeting coming up, Mikey and me, continuing with our ad hoc work with some people who specialize in communications. If you would like to be part of that, please contact Mikey or me or the Recovery Ad Hoc email and let us know. We haven't set the meeting date up yet. I'd like to do it within the next probably two weeks. Yeah, the poet laureate, that was amazing. That was just incredible. And these murals on the back walls were up here on stage and they're fabulous. I'm sorry to say I don't know who made them, but that was just a great event. Put that on your radar for next time. One of the poet laureate events, it was remarkable. The longest presentation was a poet, poem read to music and live music. And it was about the history and the history of genocide of the Roma people, the Gypsies. of the Roma people, the gypsies worldwide, because the woman who read it is a descendant of the Roma. That's about it, I just want to say, please, please keep contacting Mikey and me about any of your issues with disaster response, recovery, we will have another, at least one more public meeting, and the firm that we have selected management partners, we will be continuing our talks with them, and they will be doing their work into the city's response. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, council members, for doing such an eloquent job in answering many of the speakers' questions.
Can I comment now?
Okay, Skylar, you're up.
Thank you, Jefferson. As I look over there and I see that whale that's beautifully painted on the wall, I think about the whale that was struck yesterday while crossing the shipping lanes and washed up on the beach at County Line. I do hope that at one point in the near future, as that whale died on the beach yesterday, that the community considers pressuring the Port of Los Angeles to move the shipping lines to the exterior of the Channel Islands, out of the migration path of the whales. It was sad to see that whale take its last breath on the beach and watch the blood bubble out of its forehead. As you look to the rear of the whale, you can see where the prop hit it and kept spinning, so that's pretty sad. But I also see that there's a lot of, a lot of beautiful things that are happening in our community, as the wildflower bloom that you've seen elsewhere in the state makes its way up the coast, and the areas that were a little bit colder that are starting to warm up. Spending time up Decker recently with Bonnie this morning, is a really beautiful, beautiful time up there. I would really encourage the city to implement raptor poles at all of our parks, if we had consensus on that, we could move forward with it. Do we have consensus on that?
Yes, I had been starting, I started the predator pole.
It's already happening, yeah.
What's our timeline on that? I know we've spent a lot of time on this over the years.
We have spent a lot of time on this, even during my time the past couple of years here. I worked with the Ojai Raptor Center last week to map out locations for owl box and raptor posts at Bluffs Park and Legacy Park. There's a couple of locations that they were misconstruing on the map that we want to get right before we put them out there, because we want to make sure that we do it right when we do put them out. Anticipated that they will be done, I want to say by the end of the fiscal year, but with the, the belief that, I think it'll be sooner. So the owl boxes and raptor posts should be here relatively quickly, and we will get them up as soon as we can.
Do we need to bring back a budget item for that, Riva?
It was actually approved in the fiscal year budget for this year.
In regards to the dark sky ordinance relative to the highway, could we bring back an item that addresses the streetlights in our city in the future?
I think that's a hot enough topic, I would certainly support reviewing that, if some of the other council members would.
I would support it too, and let you know, I am having a meeting on that very soon with some experts.
So we could add that to the agenda?
Sure.
Great.
Yes.
Another thing that I thought was pretty important, that I keep seeing that I've tried to do in the past and didn't really happen, is, especially after this disaster right now, the amount of people that are working in the city is out of control. Now, I don't say it's out of control, but everyone's hiring, you know, every yahoo from anywhere to do something, because there's not that many people that, that work here all the time. And I've seen little, you know, petty theft or whatever it is here and there, and other incidents, and I'm going to say it again, I've said it before, that the city must have a business license thing in place so you know who's working here. And without that in place, we don't know who all the contractors are, we don't know who all the people are that are working for them, and it's important for the city to have something like that in place so that we know who's working here. And that goes whether it's a store, or it's a contractor, or it's a handyman, or whoever it is. That way we can communicate effectively in a disaster to all the people that come here to our community that work. So without having a list of all of those people, we can't do that, and if we did that, it would make our community also a lot safer, especially in wake of a disaster. And I don't know if there's consensus on that or not to bring something back on that, if not, I'll bring it back by my own.
I thought you already brought that forward like last year.
I've brought it back multiple times, but it would be awesome to get it on an agenda really soon, and I could ask Riva about that.
It's on the list of things for staff to be working on that we got derailed due to the fire, and what we're planning on doing is bringing back the full work plan as part of the budget item in April, and council can go through it and give us some priorities is what they want us to focus on, because we have a lot of new priorities that took over, so that would probably be the best time for us to discuss it.
All right. The other thing I wanted to address was, at a recent meeting, we passed our first reading of a neighborhood, a bit of a restriction on some of the building standards in the community, and I think when that gets brought back in the future, one thing it's important for us to maybe look at, and it wasn't entirely covered at that meeting, but I've done some meeting with a lot of people in the community about it since then, is to look at possibly some of the properties that hadn't had any improvements on, improvements on them since the city got its LCP done, and to look at seeing whether or not there's any room in there to make it so it doesn't feel like those residents feel like there's a taking with their property. So that's just something I think that maybe the community could look at, or us as a council will look at and talk to people out there in the community. And another thing that I wanted to put out there was that I did speak with, with Mr. Luskin, and, you know, in talking about their city manager form of government that we have now and whatnot, it may be something that would go on the ballot or something in the future, if, if the city ever decided to go to a strong mayor form of government, or something like that. Now, there's a, there's many different ways that that kind of stuff can happen, and it's also something that the council could, could decide to do or something like that, and there's a, many different nuances to that and whatnot, but it would be interesting to see if the community, what the community felt like that, so I'll be, I'll be talking with people in the community about that and see, and see how they feel over the future here, and it'll, you know, there's a lot to learn from a disaster, and that's, that's what we're doing, so. I appreciate all the comments from the public, and as you know, I was at the Rebu thing, and, you know, continue to, working for a better Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar, I'm just going to keep it to four brief points, because you, everybody elaborated so well here. On the SE trees, we need to remember that there are nesting periods that they are restricted to comply with, so if you see something going wrong, and you're not happy with it, please consult your nesting period for that tree and that timing and those types of avian life that are in the trees. Second up, Ken, on the city government question, you called me once and emailed me something, and it seems like something that we can explore, if you can help us elaborate on it, and then we can have an outreach possibly sometime in the future to let the community know if there's a large enough response in the community I, to move forward with some kind of understanding and some kind of educational program, we need to educate first before we make decisions. So thank you for coming up with that and mentioning it. Poison Free Malibu, Keon's been on that for eight years, and I think it's high time we get off our butts and pass this thing. And Jesse, thank you for looking into the raptor poles, I called them predator poles back in 2008, when I first pushed that forward, 11, 12 years ago, and now I'm finally getting to see it, so thank you for moving that forward. If you want to see one in operation, I have one in my house 200 yards outside the city limits, and it's very successful, it made it through the fire, and you can collect all the data that you need from underneath the pole, because most of the predators leave things behind, and you can see the little critter skeletons, quite interesting, take a field trip there. The other thing I'd like to mention, I have spoken with the president of the university, Andy, and the new president at the university, Jim, and I'm back to Kristi, and I've got it official from both presidents to draft an MOU on the Ombudsman's Office, and I'm very happy about, thank you, Mikey, it's, it means a lot to me, I think it means a lot to the community. This is a way that you can outreach with frustrations with City Hall, planning, us, and do it with somebody that is not going to interpret anything other than fair game law. So the Strauss Institute of Dispute Resolution, it's a wonderful operation, I've been up there many times and taken some good lessons from what goes on up there, so I'd like to see if I can get the council approval to draft an MOU with the university about the Ombudsman's Office, and Kristi to take hold of that.
So the item is to, for us to bring back an item, because we're not making any decisions tonight on anything, it's not, and your agenda is just sitting there waiting for you, so, plenty to do, okay, but yes, I get it, so to, to direct us, to, to bring it.
To bring it, so the council can look at it, draft an MOU with the university for the Ombuds Office. And by the way, it's revenue neutral, so it's not going to cost us a lot. And then last up, I want to congratulate Kristi for her elaborate work in Santa Monica.
Oh, thank you.
So I don't know if many of you have been following this, but the Ninth Circuit Court gave an opinion about the city of Santa Monica on their short-term rentals, and it was a favorable decision, and Kristi pretty much led the charge, you were one of the, I don't take, no, yes, you were, you were a big part of it. So with that success, when can we look forward to us bringing our draft forward, and with the consent of the council, can we put the Airbnb short-term platform issue in front of us again? And I would hope that Kristi can help us with that, because you did so well in Santa Monica.
It's legal, I can tell you that, I'll leave it to the city manager to figure out your agenda.
Okay, so I looked to the city manager for time and future.
Sure, part, part of the analysis that the council asked us to do was a financial analysis, and we do have an RFP out for a consultant right now to perform that analysis, so it's in the queue, again, it's one of the priorities that got bumped down after the fire.
Thank you, Riva, look forward to that information. Anything else from any council members, otherwise we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Yeah, I have one thing, there was a lot of talk about Edison, I would like to get a representative from Edison here at our next city council meeting to give us an update, there's been a lot of concern about, you know, just kind of get an update on what's going on, and if we could ask Diane to kind of, or another representative, whoever they have available, to come kind of regularly, thank you. And also, in regards to the undergrounding and all that stuff, like you're talking about Bonzel, we're talking about lines going through trees, you can work with your homeowners or your neighbors, and you guys can work together and collectively pool your money to put your power lines underground, there's a mechanism to do that, and I would encourage you to do that if that's something that you're concerned with in any neighborhood that you're in. So, you know, there's a lot of people in the community that are well-versed in that, and you should go ahead and contact Edison directly if you want to put an assessment district together and do it. So there's a way to do that, and the other thing is, put the pressure on the CPUC if you're concerned about undergrounding, write letters to them, that's how you're going to be able to change the laws that'll require these things to go underground in high-fire areas.
Thank you, Skylar, Kristi, your mic is still on, thank you. Okay, we're, we're moving on to consent calendar, and I'd like to get an approval, we have several items pulled by speakers in the public, item 3B7 we have speakers for, and 3B9 we have speakers for. Does any council member want to pull anything between 3B1 and 3B9, or 3B10?
I'll make a motion to approve with whatever the items you want pulled.
Somebody second?
I'll second.
Mikey seconds. Okay, folks, so we have speakers on 3B7 and 3B9. Oh, we got to vote first.
I want everything back.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, first speaker on 3B7, Graham Clifford on 3B7, Graham is followed by Scott Dietrich. Can't have his time, Graham.
Evening again, I sort of gave second thought to coming up and talking about this, because I have spoken to both Jesse and Rob about this before this evening, you know, on the Cultural Arts Commission, we've only had one meeting since October because of the fires, and by the way, I went up in, by way of, of declaration, I'm not speaking on behalf of the, of the Cultural Arts Commission, because I have not had time to talk to them, our meeting is tomorrow night, you beat us by a, by a meeting, but, so I'm talking as an individual myself, and, and I don't want to, anything I say, I don't mean to be a criticism of Rob or Jesse or any city council, city employee for that matter, but I was just shocked and appalled by the amount of money that we're spending on a slab of concrete five by five, and, and plus the, plus the cost of getting the anchor from Malibu, from Point Dume to, to Legacy Park. Now, I understand that the city, that the city has more, I guess my question now goes not as a criticism of this particular issue, but other things, you know, I'm also appalled at how much it costs us to prune trees, when it costs, in the private sector, you can do it for a fraction of the cost, so, I mean, obviously the city has to pay more money to do things that would otherwise be way cheaper, because of insurance and public liability and blah, 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 but, but there's got to be a way for us to save more money, I mean, we're just paying through the nose for a piece of concrete, it's ludicrous, and I'm, and I, and I'm, I'm not criticizing these guys, they're, they're great, and they've done a very good thorough job, and it's been above board and all the rest of it, but it's just silly that we're paying, this is not big clay, this is a six-foot-two-inch anchor, you can't play frisbee with it, admittedly, it weighs 3,300 pounds, but it's just six-foot-three, and the artist specified that he wanted it on a very small rectangular concrete block about this big, and that's what we're doing, except underneath this little block of concrete is this whopping great five-foot foundation with, with rebar through it, so the thing doesn't fall over, well, excuse me, you can't tell me that even a, even a, I could put down a slab of concrete and stick this thing in it, and it's not going to fall over even if there was an earthquake. So, as a, as a city, we have to sort of figure out why we're overpaying for everything, tree trimming, slabs of concrete, everything, so my comments have become bigger than what they started out being. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Graham. On 3B9, Ryan, Ryan?
I'm glad somebody else brought up the council policies, because actually it's policy 26, which relates to the proposed item, and that is that service contracts of the city are limited to two years, it's a limitation on the, on the contracting that staff's supposed to abide by, and I remember one exception, our city manager, Jim Thorson, brought to you, or to the council one time, when a work contract hovered around the signing authority of the city manager for a one-time repair, and it was two sewage pumps that the city owned for the city building at Webbway and Pacific Coast Highway that it rents to some retail, and that was a one-off thing, but he brought it forth for ratification as a courtesy really, to show everybody what was going on. In this case, we're proposing a service contract, or the staff is to you, which is an addition, it's an amendment, and if you look at the criteria, the, the vendor has been the same vendor with the city for a long time, this is for data entry and database management, and it's done remotely from San Fernando Valley, for a rate that's proposed for data entry and maintenance of $85 an hour for clerk, and if it's the boss of the company, it's only 105 an hour for this work, and I guess staff couldn't find anybody else to do this kind of work, and the staff report says that this is just such unique work that really nobody else can do it, because it actually integrates two different databases or three within the city, and it's only $25,000 about, but if you look at the contract preceding that from 2016, that contract provided for an increase of $100,000. an increase of a hundred thousand dollars and approval not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars at that time to this person doing business as Iris Consulting. So this is a no-bid contract. And if you look at the rate, from the old rate to the new rate for the contract clerks who should be doing the bulk of the work, it's a thirty percent increase for a no-bid contract in the thirty-two months since this was approved in July of 2016. And I don't think there's any cost of living that's gone up anywhere near that rate. I would propose that if you accept the quality of work from this contract, that they could expand their reach and work with the city and maybe some economies with that, and they can keep their same rate or maybe give them a three to four or five percent increase. But this is an astronomical increase, and it should go out for an RFP. And it's just one example of council policies that are, the exemption of the city's twenty-five-thousand-dollar signing limit for the city manager should not be an end run around the council's policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We're going to touch on 3B7 for a vote. That was Graham's concern on the forty-two thousand bid from Zussler Company. And Ryan, we'll get back to you in just a moment. Do we have any council input on the anchor statue?
Can we ask staff what's up with the anchor statue?
So good evening, mayor and council. What's included in the contract is for the contractor to actually excavate a foundation, form the concrete or form for a concrete base. It needs a certain size to make sure it has enough size for overturning for wind and earthquake loads to make sure it's safe. It's got rebar. But it also includes transportation, picking up the artwork over at the location where it's at. It also includes dialing into the art piece and making sure it secures into the foundation. So for forty-two thousand dollars, that's what our low bid came in. You can see, we can't, we got bids between forty-two thousand and a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So this was the apparent low bid, and we checked the references and everything, and they checked out to be satisfactory.
Well, thank you. I'd go ahead on.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a lot of money, but I kind of wanted to ask staff, just in terms of this structure, I didn't see like an actual visual in here of it. But I would just ask that if we're going to be investing this money in this thing, that it be something where if the art changed on the top, that we could use it to mount other art to, and that it be designed in that way, which I believe is the case. But it seems like it would be nice if we had that there, that we could always interchange the statue that's on it.
Yeah.
Or the art piece.
So if a new art piece was brought in, it'd have to make sure that the the weight and the size of the structure would meet the foundation for it. So yes, if something future that that's comparable size and weight that would fit there, it could be taken off and put something else back in.
The only thing I would add to that, it wouldn't hurt to really over-engineer it in case somebody came in with something else in the future, then we wouldn't have to do it twice. Or we can do it twice and just add more art to the park, which would be more amazing.
Thank you. I have a quick comment. Back in oh, no, 2011, 2012, I donated a statue of a bronze, went through with Laura Rosenthal, myself and one of the council member. And we had terrific engineers here at the time, and we were able to move a twenty-eight-hundred-pound bronze statue, eight feet high, on city equipment with no damage to the bronze and planted. It's over there right now as we speak, just over near Mr. Chow's. And I was looking at this earlier, that's why I knew the price, ten thousand bucks to move it from Point Dume to here, when our city did it expertly for beer. So I am just saying, well, it was after they moved.
Is that like that sign that says free beer tomorrow?
I'm just saying that our staff performed well, and it was after Friday night at five when they accepted my gift. But I just, I'm having a hard time believing ten thousand bucks when we moved twenty-eight-hundred pounds on our own with one of those flatbed trucks that the city owns. These guys got it up there, did it. It's only five hundred pounds less than this one.
Yeah, to touch base on that, you know, when we first saw the sculpture two years ago in in Mr. Sandell's yard, and he offered to donate it to us, I looked at it, and you know, I'm six-two, so it was a touch taller than me on the base. And then I think seeing them initially try to remove it from the base that it was on just just to get it out of his yard. They brought in heavy-duty forklifts both days, two days in a row, the forklifts kept sinking in the ground. It was so heavy. And so they actually ended up having to bring a crane out to move it. And due to the size, and it's it's oddly shaped, and when you see him pick it up, and I'm happy to show you photos offline of them picking up, it's just, it's very difficult to move. And so on top of that, this is a sculpture valued somewhere near fifty thousand dollars, right? So we have used LA Packing and Crating to move it the first time, and that's who we would intend to use this time as well. They're well-known in the in the industry and definitely the best at this. And so I definitely hear those concerns, just that that's why the cost is there. It's it's got to be moved with a crane and moved a long distance over here.
You could take it up to Broad Beach, it'd be a great reef. So in any case, I don't know where to go with this.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this item and get the art in the park.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're we're moving on to finalize on 3B9. I had some curious questions about 3B9 as well. I did read the the details of it. There was some new additions, Ryan, that Lori had put in to deal with the Woolsey Fire inputs that the city is going to have to face through planning. So I kind of did some detail work on it. I did say that there would be a workload increase for this vendor, but I shared your concern that that amount might be a little too high. She's been with us for years doing this work. I agree, she needs a little bit more money, she's doing a little more work, but that amount was a little steep for me. So I'd like to bring that to the council's attention.
Or Reva?
This is a this is a vendor that has worked with the city for quite a long time, and it is, she administers, she created and administers a very, are very specialized customized database for us, and her work has allowed us to be pretty nimble in terms of setting up new tracking and reporting systems to track our progress on the Woolsey Fire and evolve our database and integrate it with on-base our records management software and all of that stuff. So she works here onsite as as well as offsite and is very responsive and available to us. I don't know if Reva wants to add anything else.
I got a quick question. He mentioned eighty-five bucks an hour, but that's the after-hours rate. The normal rate is sixty-five dollars an hour, correct?
I will have to look.
On Exhibit A?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, it's like if you're working past five o'clock, you get paid a premium. So if you've worked during the normal business hours, it's not eighty-five, it's sixty-five, correct?
Right. I just wanted to add for the council that we, that staff also believes it's very important to put out for bid as many contracts as we can every time they come up for renewal. I think right now we have about four RFPs out right now, and it's something we do as part of our regular practice and policies. There's been a few contracts recently that haven't gone out to bid just due to the proximity of when they happened for renewal with the fire. But this contract really falls under a sole-service type of of service of what she does. It's so specified, and to have someone come in and step in in the middle of the processes that she's already put together would be difficult, would sort of have to start over. And I also wanted to point out that my limit to approve agreements is twenty-five thousand dollars, and anything above that is always brought to the council, and this agreement has brought to, been brought to the council. It was not approved with without approval, reviewed by council.
Thank you, Reva. I just wanted to add, it's like, one of our residents recently like was like, hey, Skylar, you know, if you got any work or anything at the city, let me know because I moved back to Malibu and, you know, I was on the East Coast for a while doing the security for the United States Postal Service and all their computer systems and whatnot, and I'd love to just find a job in Malibu managing data or something like that, right? And they sent me their resume. And I would really like to see the city have more people hired from the community that that live and breathe Malibu because I feel that they really understand our community. And I would, I'm going to forward that to you. It just came in the last couple of days. But I think that if, when we put these things out, if we can do it better out to our community here, there's a lot of people that live in Malibu that would really like to come and help and work for our our city. And maybe they just don't always know how to look in the right place for where the RFP is or whatever the job is, you know, posting. So I think that as a city, we ought to really try to get more people to come and work here from the city. We always want the best person for the job. But having the knowledge and the lay of the land here, I think is really important for someone, whether they're just a data input person or they're, you know, whatever the job is. And I really, I really value that. And I also value all of our staff that obviously don't live here, that work here because that's the majority of them. But I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Skylar. Is there anything else? Because it sounds like you may want to make a suggestion to the council and we could look at it.
I made this suggestion with a small item. I don't want there to be any situation where if I said, let's bring something back on this a little bit further, I don't want there to be any lag in data entry or anything like that. So at this time, I'd make a motion to approve it. But I would like to see something come back in the future, you know, that could, that we could further that.
Okay, I get it. I'd like to add to that. I don't want to take the city's time up and staff's time up with the details of these things, but the increase seemed significant to me. So maybe we can put a time on this so that we don't see an increase in the next contract period. I think that's a conservative way to look at it. Like if we're going to bump it up this much, we say, hey, that's got to be for a longer term. Maybe I could have the council entertain that.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you, Karen.
Can you just just repeat again exactly how you want to do it? I'm not really.
Well, the contract is for a certain period, for a certain amount.
What period?
The performance. There's a timeframe on it.
If we if we look at this contract right now, there's existing funding, and we're increasing the amount of funding, do you want to just say, go back to the vendor and say, I'm not going to give you a thirty percent increase?
Or what I was proposing is that there won't be increases because we keep giving the contract to the same vendor year after year after year. It seems like.
Want to negotiate a better rate with them?
No, because I don't want.
May I jump in and make a proposal that might work for the council is to approve this agreement so we can continue getting the services that we need related to the Woolsey Fire rebuild issues? And next time it's up, the staff will put it out for RFP and not bring back any further amendments. Would that be something that would be acceptable?
I would, I would think that's okay. I don't know how the council feels.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that works. That's probably good, good middle ground.
And there will be a timeline on the Woolsey Fire updates, and that will probably be within the contract period, so within a year.
This one says fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay. I can, that seems reasonable to come back, to move it on tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And if I could just jump in really quickly to address Councilmember Peak's statement about where do people get information? People can sign up online for an automatic alert when we issue a bid or an RFP. So if you go on the e-notification system, you can sign up, and every time we put something out, you'll get it in your inbox.
Thank you, Reva. 3B10. 3B10.
Is it pulled? Was it pulled?
Nope.
Nope, we're on the 4A.
Bonnie, do you have anything on? I'm going to go to 4A. You're up, Bonnie.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Lisa. I've got comments from other council members about a restroom break for a few minutes. We've been here for three hours now. Is that okay with everybody? And we'll be back in ten minutes, and I think we can pull that off. Thank you. Thank you for your patience in the audience. Thank you very much for your patience. We're back on 4A. I think we're on 4A.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the purpose of this item is to hold the public hearing on the authorization of a temporary transfer of approximately $80,000 of, uh, community development block fund grant funding. Um, the city's current fund balance, which can be used only for capital projects, um, earlier this year, the council approved a $7,000 allocation of CDBG funds for the Malibu Community Labor Exchange. Um, this represents 15% of the city's annual CDBG funding, and that's the maximum that can be used for programs or services. Um, so our current fund balance exceeds the maximum allowed by the CDBG program. Um, but CDBG has offered us the opportunity to do a short-term transfer of this $80,000, which would then come back to us at a later time. And so by authorizing this, we would eliminate the fund balance problem. We would allow other municipalities to use the funds now, and we would ensure that we'll have the funds necessary to complete the purchase and installation of a permanent trailer for the labor exchange when the timing of the Santa Monica College project allows it to happen. So that's it. In a nutshell, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lisa. Any council members? Uh, we'll just do a vote. We're good on this? All, we need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve item 4A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're up to 5A, it looks like. 5A. And I've spoken to Rob about this on a couple of occasions. Um, we're talking sidewalks, retaining walls, and some cool stuff. And, uh, thank you, and give us an update there. And we have public comments.
So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm going to give an update on the Civic Center Way Improvement Project. Um, here's a, here's a quick slide of the project limits. It's on Civic Center Way from Malibu Canyon Road going down, all the way down to Webway. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about what's included in the project in upcoming side, slides, but that's kind of, that's the limits of the project, what's included. So I, I want to go a little bit of a history on kind of how this project was started, and where we are, and what we've done to date. Um, this project is included in, in the city's five-year capital, uh, capital project improvement list, and it's also in the project, uh, uh, it, it's in the budget work plan. Um, this, this project was first introduced in the budget, I believe in the fiscal year 2015, 2016. This project is also funded by Measure R Transportation Fund, so the majority of the project that is, um, here is funded by that, with very little to, actually, very little, uh, general funds for this project. And back in March 2016, staff brought an item to City Council to give an update on Measure R, and to get approval to move forward with this project, with using Measure R funding. Later, in July 26, 2017, uh, uh, staff did bring this project to the Public Works Commission. Um, at that time, uh, staff brought out what the project limits were, what the scope was, details of what the project included, in, including the bike lanes, and the width of streets, and what's included in the project. It, um, at that meeting, we did, I'll show slides, more slides, slides on, on the project, but you'll see the same slides that I have tonight, we use there to show what the actual project was. In August 14, 2017, we, uh, staff brought another item to City Council for Measure R funding, and given an update, and to set some priorities on what projects were moving forward with Measure R. Uh, we brought the project to the safe, the Public Safety Commission twice to get their input. One was on August 2, 2017, and the second was on March 7, 2018. Uh, we received some comments, very good input from, uh, the Safety Commission, and implemented, uh, whatever we could with those comments in, into the design. Lastly, last September 13th, we did have a community town hall meeting where we invited the public, especially those are along, um, Civic Center Way by the condos. We wanted to get their input and comments, and got some really good information from them, some comments, and implemented, um, some of the things. And I'll talk about those things when we, um, in, in future slides here. So, so here's a brief kind of update on what the improvements consist of. Roadway alignments improvements. Uh, what that, what that includes is kind of taking away a, a lot of the humps and the, and the curves along in, in Civic Center Way. What happens with the, with the, especially about the big hump by the condos, is that it, it causes a very, um, difficult sign, light of sight distance. And so you can't see too far down, it makes it very hard. And so what we're doing is, we're going to bring that hump down a little bit, make the line of sight a little better, make it a little bit safer. So those, that's the kind of the roadway alignment issues that we're, that we're going to be implementing. There'll be some pedestrian improvements, there'll be a walkway, uh, there'll be bike, bike lane improvements, so there'll be a bike lane on both sides, on, on the majority of the, the corridor. That, we also have to do some slight modifications to the traffic signal, especially at, uh, Winter Canyon intersection and Civic Center Way. We're installing some stormwater treatment systems, where those devices will capture stormwater, treat the stormwater before it gets, uh, released out and discharged into, uh, storm drain systems, and eventually the ocean. And lastly, we'll be doing some landscaping improvements, um, planting trees, and, and making the area a little bit more, um, with, beautified with landscape. So this first slide is, um, the first section that I want to bring up is from Malibu Canyon Road to, uh, it goes all the way down to Win-, um, Vista Pacifica. And this section here includes a, um, two, a two-lane road, and we're going to in- increase the width, make sure the widths are, are standard widths all the way through. It has a bike lane on either side, it has a walkway from Malibu Canyon Road all the way down. Um, uh, there's also a small retaining wall that's on the south side of Winter Canyon Road, or, uh, Winter Ma- uh, Winter? Yeah. Uh, and that's, uh, there's a signal there, and we need that retaining wall to, to hold back some of the slope there. I think there's a small one now, we're just making it a little bit, a, a little bit bigger and, and more safe in that area. The second section is from Vista Pacifica, all the way down past the condos. Um, it's also an area right in front of the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility. Here too, you can see the yellow is the pathways that go a- along, uh, the south side of Civic Center Way. It continues all the way down. One of the comments that we received from the condos during our community meeting was, uh, they would like to see a pathway from the condos going all the way over to, to Vista Pacifica, and, um, we were able to implement, implement that and put that into the project. And so that's in there. Another thing that we, we added, or we, that's in this project, is a, a retaining wall that's on the north side of Civic Center Way, right in front of the condos. That retaining wall is there to, um, because we are actually lowering that hump that's in there, and, and we need a retaining wall over there to hold back the slope, and so the condo is going to be safe from, from us lowering the road. Up on the top left, you can see traffic signal improvements at, at that intersection. What that, what that includes is, we're, we're moving some traffic signal poles that are, um, that need to be moved based on our improvements, the, the walkways are, and So that, that work, that traffic signal is mostly just moving some signal poles around. Lastly, it's this, the last little section that goes from the condos all the way to Webway. Once again, you can see the walkway on the, the bottom side of, or south side of Civic Center Way, all the way to Webway. It includes a bike lane. Up on the top part of Civic Center Way, north side, we, we were restricted by some width there, and so able to get a bike lane in that section was very challenging. We had, the width of the road didn't allow a whole lot of improvements in that area, so we weren't able to get a full bike lane in that section. It'll be a shared bike lane with, with the road, but once it gets past that pinch point, we're able to get a bike lane in there. Another thing that's added in there, too, is we are putting a right turn lane on Civic Center Way as you turn right on Webway, and those improvements will be added to this project. And the last slide I have here is some landscaping. You can kind of see where some, some of the street trees are planted towards the top of Civic Center Way by Malibu Canyon. There's some other street trees that are, that are between Vista Pacifica and the condos. There'll be some other vegetation that are, that's going to be in the parkway landscaping area, right in front of the Civic Center Water Treatment Facility, and it's all local native planting material that we're using. Our construction estimate is $4 million. And like I mentioned, this is all funded by Measure R Local Transportation Funds. Construction bidding, we're anticipating having this project out to bid in April or May. And construction, we are anticipating starting during the summer and to be done within six months. We're estimating early 2020. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Looks exciting. We have several comments. First up is Don Schmitz, followed by Graham, followed by Ryan.
You can count some members. Don Schmitz, I want to thank Rob, his team, the city for this excellent project. I do have some comments. I mentioned this to Rob. I'm a little concerned about where we're putting sidewalk on this. Once you get down past Malibu Canyon Village, the sidewalk is all on the south side of Civic Center Way, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. As you go up towards Malibu Canyon, you've got the two schools, you've got the church, you have all the condominium complexes, and there's some sidewalk in there that ties that all together. But the sidewalk to go from that residential node up on the western side of Civic Center Way, down into the Civic Center proper, is all on the south side of the road. So everybody from the condominium complexes and the kids and such in school are going to have to cross Civic Center Way to then walk down to get to the Civic Center proper. And then to get back to where things are really going to be happening, they got to cross the street again to get to the community college and to the library and everything else. I think it would make a lot more sense if we either had another sidewalk, or if we had the sidewalk relocated onto the north side of Civic Center Way. Now, I understand there are some topographical pinch points in there, but I checked the surveys, and the city has a huge amount of rideaway in that area. There is room to make those improvements. So my plea to the council would be to seriously consider putting the sidewalk on the north side of Civic Center Way from the condominiums all the way down to the intersection of Stewart Ranch Road, so that people could go ultimately from Saratoga all the way up to Pepperdine without having to cross the road. Additionally, one of the things that's a little bit missing in the planning on this, and maybe it got dropped, but I did spend seven years as your Trails Commissioner and working on that. And this was the area that the Malibu Pacific Trail was mapped to go across from Saratoga through the Civic Center, to go across and connect up with Pepperdine and to areas to the west. This is the most logical place for it. It's not addressed at all in, in this planning, and I don't want to be the Johnny Come Lately in regards to this excellent design, but we did adopt, we being the city, being you, the council, did adopt that as the alignment for the Malibu Pacific Trail a number of years ago. So with the modification, as it pertains to putting the sidewalk on the north side of Civic Center Way, and maybe a little bit more additional study in regards to some sort of future accommodation for the Malibu Pacific Trail, I, again, I just want to commend the Department of Public Works and you for your excellent efforts on this.
Thank you, Don. Graham, you're up, followed by Ryan.
I also wanted to commend Rob on a good presentation, on a, on a good project. My only comment is narrow down to the, to the traffic light we already have at Stewart Ranch Road and Civic Center Way. I was hoping we would get a roundabout for there, but that unfortunately never happened. But that being the case, that's history. But right now, I just have a practical issue, which is that the, even though every ingress street on that four-way intersection has, has wire receptacles, receptors underneath the pavement, I think they do, Rob, don't they? The one, the one coming down from, down Stewart Ranch Road doesn't seem to be working well, because you often get, to sit there forever, waiting for cars on Stewart Ranch Road to come out when there are no cars there. So it's, someone just needs to take a look at that, because it shouldn't be tripping itself. If there's no cars there, we shouldn't have a green light in that direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Graham. And Ryan, final speaker on this.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the staff for incorporating the concerns that the, were raised at the meeting with all of the condo residents, because it hadn't taken into account putting the sidewalk on the side of the street where everybody needs to go and where they live. So there is a retaining wall proposed. I don't know how significant that is, if it's going to be adequate, because the original reason that that was ignored was said, yeah, we didn't want to use the funding on that, but they had all the landscape and the beautiful trees and everything. That's where the money went. So I'm glad we maybe got some priorities balanced so far. But I want to say, learning that the restoration of the right turn lane that had been there for 35 years is now at the cost of and is not implemented because it's coming out of this pot of funding for the Civic Center improvements, that's disingenuous. The other is to landscape in front of the city's new sewage treatment plant with the cost of this project? That's interesting. If it was anybody else, we'd condition that they landscaped the project. And the same goes for the retaining wall that's on the south side, which is in front of the city's own property. So I want to make sure that the city's not using this money for the beautification, to build a retaining wall and landscape its adjacent property, at the expense of not having a proper width sidewalk for the students and the residents who live all on the north side of Civic Center Way, to take the path down to the Civic Center, where all the activity, the library, and, you know, the farmer's market is, where you have trouble parking anyway, and to be able to do the throughput access. And the identified improvement, the safety improvement, was from the city's own traffic engineer, Walter Okitsu, when I was on the panel of the Civic Center Way Task Force. And that was to identify all of the remaining road width on the south side of Civic Center Way, and expand the pavement as far close to PCH as possible. And that would allow for the full width of sidewalk area, and it would take the traffic by moving the center line of the road and this left turn pocket, moving it farther southwards. There's more visible clearance for the 200 residents of Malibu Canyon Village to turn in and turn out and see the cars coming up over the hill. So lowering the top of the hill as much as possible, retaining wall and widening at the pinch point, the problem area, to address the problem area first, and, you know, picking the trees later. That's, you only have one chance to really throw money and fix the problem, and that's at the top of the hill, and to facilitate the pedestrian movement all the way down. So the proper width for a sidewalk on the north side, and move the traffic in the pavement as far south as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We're up to council here. Thank you for your comments. And who would like to start?
I'll start. Yeah, I noticed a thing about the, you know, your, your comments about the sidewalk. It's like, and then everyone runs across the street, right at the, kind of the dangerous corner part. And there's really no reason to be on that side of the street, because there's just like a, a lot, you know? And with everything that's being developed down there, being on the north side of the street does make a lot of sense. So how about that? I mean, what are our options at this point? Is the ship already sailed, or can we shift everything over and keep the sidewalk there, or make, make it wide so you have a sidewalk on both sides? What can we do?
So we could, we could look at it again and seeing how we can, we can add it. We have, the plans are all final, but that doesn't mean that things can't be added. We can look at that and see, from, from my memory, as you can see, I'm getting older. I've got to wear glasses now.
It gets worse.
It doesn't. Thank you very much. Is that, is that the rightaway does pinch down a lot? And, and we thought about putting in the sidewalk on both sides, and it just, there was a, really a pinch point there. But we can look at it again and see what we can do. One of the things, too, is we can always, we can add it in as a additive to the, to the project and see what it is, and comes back, and we can always see where at from there. I think that was one of the suggestions we talked about during our community meeting, was that we could see, we can add things and see if we could get prices to, you know, to, you know, to expand as much as we want, and then we can make the determination later if we want to add that or not. But we can look at that, definitely.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's, there's some impressive improvements here. I mean, it's pretty cool. You got, at some points, you got bike lanes on both sides. That's pretty neat. And then it goes around the corner, and then, oh, you know, your bike lane disappears on this side, and you got to go that side. But if you're going to, if, if at that point, when you go around the corner, you only have enough room for a sidewalk on one side or the other, it seems like the north side would be the hot ticket, you know, to keep everybody there, so.
It's also better for visibility.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the engineering is, if it's not possible, but I, you don't want to have a crosswalk there, and you're going to have people running across the road. That's kind of silly.
So also spending quite a few ti, have quite a few months and, I don't know, days over at the treatment plant, we saw a lot of people from Pepperdine walking down from, from Malibu Canyon Road, going down on that side. We see, we saw just daily people walking up and down on that side. So the initial thought is that we saw-
On, on the wastewater side?
On, yeah, on the south side. And so, but like I said, we can look at that and see if we can add it. I mean, that's not, that's not a huge, huge issue.
I just want to hear what everybody else has to say, because it kind of does make sense in a way. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't frequent that. I don't live there. I'm not literate with it. It's just my general take on it, you know? If you're going to have the sidewalk disappear from the side where everybody kind of lives and all the stuff is, and then run across the street, that seems kind of silly.
If I may add, I'm afraid they wouldn't run across the street. They would just walk on that side, and I wouldn't want to create a more dangerous situation. It looks beautiful. If there's any way that the walkway can go along the south side, I mean, the north side, I just, my fear is that people won't cross over and go back. They'll just walk there anyway.
Skylar, you're up, and then Mike, you're on the last.
So this is a receive and file item, and I think you're asking for a bit of direction on a couple of things to look at as this project moves forward, and you go out for RFP. This also reminds me of the Esplanade project that Ann Payne had talked about for so many years, and so many people had walked on. It kind of ties Bluffs Park, Cross Creek, Surf Rider, the whole zone together with a bit of pedestrian movement.
I think it's Ann Ryan.
Ann Ryan, sorry. But I think that we do recognize that there are some changes happening in the area, and that it's important to ensure public safety. When I was at Pepperdine, or shortly thereafter, there was a student that was killed on that corner right there. I'm, I'm drawing a blank on his name. I do remember him when we were in school.
Last name was Molson.
Yeah. And, or I think it was, it might have been more than one, actually. Maybe it was a pedestrian or something that was hit, or someone on a motorcycle. I forget exactly. But I'm glad that we're making the public safety improvements, but I think it's important to really look at the, the needs of the residents that live in the immediate area. And as, as a student that went to Pepperdine and did at times walk all the way down into Cross Creek, the reason why you walk on that other side of the road is because that's where there's more space to walk, and it's safer. It wouldn't be safe to walk along an area where there's no place to walk. So wherever you create the walk space, you'll walk. And I think it's, would be wise for the city to look at actually putting a little bit narrower lanes there, because that'll have people actually drive a little bit slower and allow for a larger place for the pedestrians and bikes. And the striping with that, although maybe counterintuitive, can actually get drivers to drive a little bit slower in that area. It's very easy to come down that hill and go 50 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour. And I don't think that that's what the people that live in the area are really entirely in favor of, and I don't know if that's in the best interest of public safety there. I think it's very important when this project gets looked at, that you look at the traffic flow at the current intersection that got messed up with a stoplight, and that's why I wanted a roundabout when it originally came before the council. It's very upsetting to me that the previous council did not support that. And they didn't understand at the time when we were deciding that project, the reason for putting something like that in. And now we all get to sit and wait at the light. It would be very important in this project to incorporate that intersection and get a roundabout there, as it's important to get a roundabout at the other intersection. Or address the entire traffic flow in the area at one time. We've done it by the mitigation that's been done with the Whole Foods project, and it's very important that this council look at that. We do have La Paz coming back to us at some point in the future. They're probably going to want to change some stuff. I know I have a call with them tomorrow about lighting. But I do believe that it's, it's really wise to look at the entire flow of this area when we go to expend this amount of money. That's it. And I know it's a receive and file, so hopefully we can have something back that incorporates some of those thoughts from all the council members.
Thank you, Skylar. Mikey's a pass on this one, so I'd like to throw in my two cents worth. Great work, Rob. I know we've spoken about the north side sidewalk and that retaining wall. Having a residence there in the condos, it's better to have it, in my opinion, living there on the right side or the north side for the sidewalk, because you will have a better visual capability as you're coming over the hump either direction. If you're looking toward PCH as you're coming around that turn, you're not looking in the right place. So I think that behavior will become apparent to people that are using that turn area, where you're coming up over the hill and heading down. It's off camber. So I would agree with you that we do need it on the north side, as well as the other council members who've also spoken about it, that the sidewalk should be on the north side, supporting that hill. It, it makes a lot of sense. The Pepperdine students, when they come down, we're going to have a cemetery there sometime. They'll come through the cemetery or along next to the cemetery. They can cross it to Winter Canyon, it's traffic signal, to come, if they're coming south from Pepperdine towards Civic Center. They can cross there. We may have to create another crosswalk in the straight area down near the bottom to get that traffic, because there's no room on the edge there on the north side, past the condos, to put anything. You've walked it enough. You understand where, where I'm headed with this. So the sidewalk has to be in between PCH and Civic Center Way as you're headed downhill on the long straightaway. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think that we can look to see about adding the sidewalk on both sides. We can, we can see, it's one of the things that we also, would catch my repeat, was mentioning, maybe it's narrow lane width, maybe something we can get that. So we'll, we'll look at that and see. We'll, we'll see what we can do to make that happen. I, yeah, I understand that getting that, that right, that connection all the way to, to the intersection from the north side is something we'll, but we'll, we'll see what we can do to make that happen. If it means having narrower, you know, pathways going through, too, to make that happen, too, we can, we can look at that, too.
I appreciate, oh, Skylar has another comment?
The other thing I would say to look at, and maybe this is, makes it more cost-effective, maybe it doesn't, but there's nothing wrong with having an elevated sidewalk on one side, because it can actually keep the pedestrians away from the cars. So if, if you do that, or, or the bike, bike lane or something, I mean, look at the bike- So, if you do that, or the bike, bike lane or something, I mean, look at the bike lane that's along the 101 freeway as you go up on the coast. It's completely separated from the cars that are traveling. And that's how you keep the cyclists and the pedestrians safer. If you wanna keep the cyclists and the pedestrians safer, put something that separates them from the cars. And that's something that we can do. I mean, I only say that because in this area, cars are going the same speed that they are on the highway. So, if we know that that's the condition that's there and we're gonna slope it down lower, the cars are gonna go even faster, let's make it safe. And look at the whole area and look at the Knowles as well and look at, you know, now maybe that changes the scope of the project, but if we're gonna do this, let's do it all at once.
Thank you, Skylar. One more comment. How wide, do we know how wide the easement is there between Caltrans and our property? Is it wide enough for another sidewalk in that flat straight area?
Maybe, I'll take a look at it. I think Don's pulling up some stuff, but I don't, I don't remember the top of my head what it is, but we'll, we'll take a look at it and see what we can do. I'm confident we can do something over there, but I just have to look to see what type of improvements we can do, what type of pathway we can put along that one side.
Thank you. It sounds like you have a lot of council comments that are wishing you good luck with this project. We're all behind it, it appears, and favorable, we'll just try and work the squeaks out. I do have to announce a part of the Political Reform Act, FPPC Rule Enforcement, 18702.02. I cannot vote on this. So, from this point on, I will not vote on it.
So, in the future, Mr. Mayor, you can't even participate if you are, so you have to leave the room while the council makes the decision on this. You can't even participate in the discussion, it's not a matter of voting. So, if you're within that and you, and it's gonna have an effect on you, you have to leave the room so we can take action.
Okay, I will leave the room and leave you to that. And if you wanna explain with 10 whatever, I got it on my email, you know, I just wanna be the right guy.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So, under the Political Reform Act, it's presumed that a council member has a disqualifying interest if a project affects property within 500 feet of property that they own or have an interest in. I'm assuming that you own property within 100, 500 feet of the project?
Correct.
Yeah, so, that would be a disqualifying interest, so you should leave the room so that the council can decide.
And I'll leave it to Karen to take the vote.
Christie, just for the record, this is a receive and file only, there's no action on this.
Right, you can't part, right. I understand that, but there is no roll call to be taken.
That's the rules. Just peek out of the room and-
I'd like us to go to the next item. Thank you, Rob. I'd like to vote too.
Okay, so procedurally, we will receive and file.
Radius maps, but if for some reason they don't, it's up to you as council members because you know where you own property and where you own businesses, so it's up to you to, and then if you do have a disqualifying interest, you can't participate in the decision at all. Can't contact staff, can't email, no participation, and have to leave the room at the beginning of it. So, thus, no harm, no foul here, but there you go.
Thank you, Christie. And when I spoke to Rob about the project before, it was many, many years ago before all this came up. Thank you, Rob, for the great work on this. Next up, looks like 6A, 6A? We did that. No, it was 5A, 6A, 6A, Woolsey Fire Storm Damage Costs. That'll be Lisa.
Good evening again. This item really serves as kind of our chance to touch base between when we last talked to you about cost, which was at the mid-year budget, and before we come back again a month from now to do our first special meeting for next year's budget. And in that time, we've, staff has been working very hard, making sure that we've itemized all the damage, we've been accumulating cost estimates on things that we have to repair, we've been working with our insurance company to see which items they're covering. And so, the, we have a much clearer picture. Of course, that picture is still subject to change because many of these are construction estimates. And when we actually go out to do the work or go out to bid for what will be significant repair, those costs will change again. Insurance has been doing a very good job of covering costs related to restoration of city facilities, things that are listed on our property schedule. So, that includes things like the cleaning and environmental testing for City Hall, the Michael Landen Center, work at Tranqus Park, other things that we had sort of in our initial discussions with the insurance company, thought that they were covered. They have, there are sort of limits on our policy because these are things that are not specifically listed on our schedule, our property schedule. And those includes city infrastructure like roads, and the roads are significant because there was a lot of guard rail throughout the city that was burned and destroyed and needs to be replaced. We are actually working to do that with Los Angeles County. They've been designing the guard rail replacement all along Canaan, and they're, they've agreed to do the portion that's in the city. But those costs are significant. They're gonna be probably over $2 million to do all that replacement. Now, those are costs that FEMA, they are on our FEMA project worksheets, they will be ultimately, the city will be reimbursed for those costs, but it is, it is money that we will have to put out first and then get reimbursed. And I know historically, people are concerned because FEMA can take a long time. Our more recent experience is that two years ago, we were in the storms. It was, it was a far less, you know, devastating event and the city's expenditures were roughly, you know, $340,000 some thousand dollars, and we got paid very quickly within a year. And so, I think we're confident, we have a good team with FEMA and CalOES, our project management staff is good, and staff here has been working with them. But it, we will be ongoing, and I just kind of wanna lay this out for you so that there are significant costs. One, that we have to put out the door and have to wait to get the money back. And then, the city share, while FEMA pays 75%, the state OES, $7.8 million, that the city share on that is roughly around half a million dollars. And then, what we didn't talk about in January, although we knew it was happening and we, we put in a placeholder in the mid-year budget of like $200,000 for debris removal in relationship to the winter storms. I think even at that meeting, we had no idea the kind of impact we would get. And we've definitely, the debris removal was far beyond that. I mean, Public Works was working tirelessly to clear culverts and make sure debris basins were empty, only to have them filled in every storm event, you know, within an hour. So, they had to do it all over again. And at this point, we're looking at costs from those events at about $1.4 million. Governor Newsom did declare a state emergency for the storms, so that means that there will be reimbursement of 75% of the costs from the state that we would be eligible for. The county and the state are currently working with FEMA to see if we can get a federal declaration for the storms. That hasn't happened yet. That would sort of lower the percentage that we would have to pay, but currently, we're looking at paying at least 25% of those costs. And as, you know, and that could change. We don't know, they've met the dollar threshold, but the, clearly, I mean, with what's happening in the Midwest, I don't know that they're focusing on the storms that have already passed. I think they're, the federal government's probably fixed more on the current dilemmas. So, we'll see whether we get a federal declaration or not. So, in that case, we're sort of prepared that, you know, we are gonna pay around 25%, which would be approximately another $350,000. So, I just kinda wanna lay that out. I'm happy to answer any questions. We will definitely have more detail for you a month from now when we go over the budget. And again, these numbers will be, get further refined as we move through that process.
Thank you, Lisa. Council members?
I have a question, Lisa. Do we know, do you know precedent for other reimbursables like the Santa Rosa Fire or the Thomas Fire? Have they been reimbursed? You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a guesstimate on how long it might take.
I think it's really an individual issue by disaster, so different things can happen that might delay it if there's multiple disasters throughout the country at the same time that pull FEMA representatives onto other tasks. I can, you know, it just is really depends, so I think it's hard for us to predict, but city staff has really established very good working relationships with the FEMA representatives that we have right now, so I'm hopeful that'll pay off for this one. And I would add to that, that we have, staff has been through this already a number of times, and so we know what FEMA is looking for in terms of documentation. So, staff already has our requests and all the backup that we know FEMA asks for, so we're very, we're well positioned to submit good reimbursement requests. So, hopefully, that kind of streamlines the process too. And in fact, our FEMA project manager has been really complimentary there. They're actually very pleased with the level of documentation we've already provided. So, we're doing everything we can to streamline it. So, you know, as much as we can control it, we are, you know, the rest is sort of up to them.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any further estimates on revenue loss due to sales tax decrease, property tax, something else in my mind too, but those kind of losses?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be bringing that in the budget, I mean, we're, and we're analyzing it. We've been looking at the property taxes pretty carefully. We're waiting to hear directly from them. We haven't gotten anything based on what they're proposing that the losses would be. We don't have numbers from them, but our just cursory look is, I think we're pretty lucky here and that those numbers may remain flat rather than really take a dip. But again, we're waiting for numbers from them. We are also working with our consultant on the sales tax numbers, and I haven't seen the quarter that the fire occurred, they haven't given me those numbers yet. So, we're projecting a dip and, you know, it's hard to say at this point because they just haven't given us the data.
Right.
We're planning on having all that information ready for the council's part of the budget, but at this point-
No, I know.
We don't have detailed information, so we're not trying to be evasive. We actually are still collecting-
Oh, I believe you, I'm just curious if there's any updates. How about increase in costs in staff, which must be, must be somewhat-
I don't think we were prepared to answer any questions about that tonight, and I don't want, you know, either of us to give you misinformation, but we know that's important. And as I said, it's all coming as part of the budget.
Thank you. Skylar?
I'd just like to make a motion to receive and file and say thank you for the report on this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Rick.
Okay, this is two letters of support that I would like to send, one in support of SB584, which is the undergrounding of utilities thing that I mentioned earlier, and also I'm gonna go up there and testify along with that mayor of Laguna Beach. And then, also one in support of AB1788, a bill that would expand current regulation prohibiting the use of pesticides containing one or more anticoagulants to the state, including state-owned property unless the Department of Public Health determines there's a public health emergency or the California Environmental Protection Agency determines there is an environmental emergency. We do have three, three speakers, Mr. Mayor. That's pretty much all I have for that. That's all I wanna do is just write letters in support, from me, in support of those things. Like I said, for the one of them, I'll go up to Sacramento and testify.
Terrific, Rick. Great proposal. Norm, you're up, or Norm Haney, Speaker, Joel Schulman, and Keegan Gibbs. Norm, you're first.
City council members, I'm gonna make this short because I've got a case of laryngitis, but I'm in full support of both of these programs, with one exception, where it says in the, in the lower one, where it talks about the anticoagulants, it says state-owned property. Is it possible to change that to all publicly owned property, which would also include federally owned property? Because there are quite, it's quite a bit of property in the city of Malibu that's owned by the federal government and, of course, the state of California as well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Norm, we'll get back to you. Joel, good evening again.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a very good point that Norm brought up that we were discussing when we were deciding on what to put in the bill. So, it's a tough one, how far to go? Anyway, this AB1788, it's to correct what the Department of Pesticide Regulation did in October of 2014. They reckon, the good thing that they did then is they recognized the problem. They documented incredibly well the 90% level of poisoning of the wildlife around California. Their solution in 2014 was to stop, to ban the second generation anticoagulants from consumers. You couldn't go to the hardware store and get the second generation, which is the worst of the decon. And we told them at the time, I remember in Fran Pavly's office, a group of us, Coalition, saying, "This is not gonna work because it's really the pest control companies going to people's houses and going to the shopping centers and to businesses that are really supplying most of the, causing most of the problem with all the poison bait boxes all over the place." And we had to wait for it to fail. And the data has shown that there has been no improvement at the, in the rate of poisoning of wildlife. And actually, we're doing several things and I won't tell you about them, too complicated, but this is one of them. Trying again, after, this is the third or fourth time we've tried for a bill, but it's completely different this year because we have some really excellent backing from, in this case, the Animal Legal Defense Fund and others. The big guys have really, in fact, they've even taken it over, which is great. And we're spending tens of thousands of dollars on lobbyists, which it is a total waste of time to go to the legislature without doing that. You need someone in Sacramento. And I told our coalition, our team there, which is Animal Legal Defense Fund and Lighthouse Public Affairs, this is really excellent lobbying group, that City of Malibu wants to help, and another group is the National Parks Conservation Association, wants to help with serious lobbying support. Have you heard anything from these guys? I keep telling them.
I haven't. CalSTRAT has.
Have you heard from anybody?
Christie, can we direct CalSTRAT to take this issue and support them 100%?
I already have.
Yeah. Has any contact been made?
Not for you?
If not, it's not your guys' fault, it's, you know, because I've told our team to do that.
I can follow up with specifically, I know they've spoken with the bill's author extensively about this, of how we could be supported.
You mean Bloom or?
Yes.
Have you talked into the lobbying guys, the Lighthouse Public Affairs?
I'll have to follow up with that, I'm not sure off the top of my head, Joel, but I will follow up tomorrow on that.
Okay, but I should follow up also if you haven't heard from them, because I'm not, they may not have-
I spoke to them, I didn't ask them that specifically, so I will certainly ask that, but it's certainly on their to-do list now.
Okay, but anyway, that's great. So, we got a great team, and tomorrow is the first of the two committees votes on it. Last year, we passed this committee, ESTM, Environmental Safety and Toxic Materials. And then there's a second committee, that was the problem last time, and now we're really doing what we should've done, educating them and getting to them and having, so- And now we're really doing what we should have done, edu- educating them and getting to them and having a, so it's, we have hopes. But it's still a long shot.
Terrific, Joel. Thank you for continuing with all this great effort on behalf of your community.
Yep.
Means a lot to all of us.
For proposing it. Thanks.
Keegan?
Hey, guys. So, uh, first, Rick, thank you so much for publicly supporting this. I think it's really important. Undergrounding the public utilities is something that I hope my community, at least in Point Dume, people get, get together and start putting the funds and the pressure on them to make that happen. And in terms of the assembly bill, uh, I think it's obviously a really important gesture for our community, especially the proximity of the San Monica Mountains, that we stand for that. Unfortunately, I think, uh, city council over the last five or six years has voted numerous times to support legislation locally to ban anticoagulants and pesticides. Uh, I think it's been up twice, both in 2014 and, I think, believe, May of last year, in 2018. And just earlier tonight, I heard you guys make a motion again. So, I'm standing because I, I'm a bit frustrated and a bit bewildered about how this process works. 'Cause if the, it's already gone to vote twice, but no legislation has been passed, what's not working? My understanding from meeting with different people is that there's been some sort of stonewalling, I think, on Kristy's part, and I don't, I, I, I don't know you, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything. But my question to you is, why? There's been precedent with other cities and other counties. It's, um, pesticides and anticoagulants are banned in LA County. We're not going out on a legal limb here, trying to, uh, risk ourselves to, uh, a lawsuit, and it's really important and it's timely, especially post-fire, seeing that the wildlife habitat was decreased by about seventy-five percent, right? So now there's all these, all this wildlife running all around the San Monica Mountains, looking for food, and there's no food. So that's why they're going to these houses, getting into bait boxes. Rats are getting eaten by, you guys, you guys, you guys don't need the education, 'cause you guys all support this already. So I don't wanna hear that this gets put for vote or, um, implementation in, in another year. This needs to happen, like, basically immediately, and all the framework's already out there, and I just would like to ask you, Kristy, when that's gonna happen, and, um, if that will happen. That's, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Keegan. We're gonna talk about it at the council here, and, uh, it's nice to see young faces getting involved in city politics. Thank you for your time, sir. Uh, we're back here at the council.
Uh, one comment I wanna say. Thank you, Joel and Keon, for helping me with my letter and all the hard work that you've done, and, uh, for having me over at your house the other day and chatting about this. Any comments?
Equally, uh, when Rick and I and Skylar were running for office, we made this one of our priorities, so it sure would be nice to get it done while we're here. So, I think Kristy and Riva get it, and they will follow through to their best abilities. They've heard from the council, and, uh, I'd like to see this done as well.
Do you have a, a first and a second on this?
Uh, well, I'll put it up.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you have it.
Make, uh, motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn. We have some people to remember during the adjournment. Uh, we have Joan Zambetti, Tally Philbrick, and with Karen's suggestion, Dick Dale. And Millie Decker again. So...
And if you give me Millie Decker's thing, I'll take it to her house.
So we are adjourned at ten thirty. Thank you very much for your participation, and good night.